This is meeting to order.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Don Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz. Alexandra Lessen.
Here.
And Nancy Rumpel.
Here.
Thank you. Nancy, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And Denise, would you read the Thompson School District Michigan's statement, please?
The Thompson School District will be a school district that powers challenges and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
All right, thank you. Our first item on the agenda is actually the adoption of the agenda. Hopefully you all have a chance to look at what we're going to be accomplishing this evening. And I would take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Bearing none, let's proceed. Oh, Laurlee, what do you call the role, please?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz. Alexandra Lessen.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpel.
Aye.
We have two sets of minutes that we need to approve. The first is from the regular board meeting on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Hopefully you all had a chance to review those minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of the meeting of December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four? Bearing none, I'll accept a motion then to approve the minutes.
So moved, seconded.
Any discussion? Let's proceed then to the vote, Laurlee.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz. Alexandra Lessen.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpel.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes six to nothing. We also need to approve minutes from our January eighth, twenty twenty-five study session. Again, hopefully you have the opportunity to review those minutes, and I take a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's proceed then to the vote, Laurlee.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz. Alexandra Lessen.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpel.
Aye.
All right, that also is approved unanimously. We'll move to the section of the meeting that's called Public Participation, beginning with the superintendent's report, which will also include the MLK celebration of student recognition.
Good evening, Vice President Boyd and members of the Board of Education. This evening I am pleased to give you some updates and highlights for the month of January. So after a restful winter break, we were pleased to welcome students back into the classroom on January eighth. The first half of our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year was excellent, and we look forward to continuing that success throughout the second semester. On Saturday, January fourth, before the boys' basketball game between Thompson Valley High School and Loveland High School, Thompson School District and the Colorado High School Activities Association honored Gordon Jones for his twenty-one years of service as a basketball referee and his ten years of service as the district's chief financial officer, a position he recently retired from. Thank you, Gordon, for your amazing work and your caring support of students here in T S D and for other states. So this evening we have a number of students that we would like to honor and recognize as part of the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration. So if you are here, students, as part of our Martin Luther King Junior Celebration, I'm going to ask you to come forward. I'm going to say a few words, and then we're going to take a picture with you. So students, if you can come forward, if you're part of that. Got some artwork, and if you want to just come forward and just hold up. Some of you brought some artwork, some writing, and this is awesome. Okay, I'm going to, let me read a couple of comments here. Last Thursday, our community came together to honor the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior at the twenty twenty-five MLK Day commemorative program. This cherished annual event made possible through the partnership of Harvard Soul, Thompson School District, the Thompson Education Foundation, and many community partners, celebrates the values of unity, hope, and justice. We were especially proud to have our very own Lucille Irwin Middle School principal, Dr. Olivia Gillespie, as the featured speaker. Highlights of the evening included the inspiring student artwork, essays, awards. We had one musical feature as well, as a musical performance. We had a musical performance actually by the Scrappy Breakers as well. The ceremony was a beautiful tribute to Dr. King's message and a testament to the creativity and passion of our students. Thank you to everyone who joined us for this meaningful celebration. And the students you have in front of you are our district award winners at various grade levels for, again, their artwork, their different pieces, essays. We had one student who wrote an original song and performed it, which was, that was a big deal, it was great. So how about a round of applause for these incredible people? And so what I'd like to do, if we can, Board of Education, love to come down and take the picture, if we can't, we won't take it. Thank you again, students, and yes, I see you for making your way out. On Wednesday, January fifteenth, Thompson School District's Exceptional Student Services Department hosted a Colorado Department of Education Learning Cohort Event at Mountain View High School. Over fifty seniors from around the state attended the event. The cohort is a collaborative effort to help improve special education systems throughout Colorado. The group focused on collaboration and the sharing of innovative strategies to enhance special education systems, ensuring better outcomes for students with diverse needs. Tomorrow evening, Thursday, January twenty-third, our district will be hosting a special dual-language immersion forum. It will be held right here in this room from five thirty to seven P M. This meeting will be a terrific opportunity for families to share their experiences and thoughts about T S D's D L I program and to help the district plan for the future. Pondros Elementary School students are diving into exciting hands-on learning experiences in science this year. As part of their exploration, these curious global learners examined weathering rocks to understand the processes shaping or planning. By investigating the effects of weathering, they're sharpening their observation skills, asking critical questions, and making real-world connections to the natural environment around them. A heartfelt thank you goes out to the three local Safeway stores here in Loveland and their incredibly generous customers for raising an amazing seventeen thousand dollars during this year's Kids Pack Holiday Fundraiser. Thanks to your kindness and support, these funds were distributed to families in need through Safeway gift cards, making a meaningful difference in their lives. We are so grateful for your partnership in helping families in our community. Thank you for making an impact. In light of the delayed start that we instituted yesterday morning, I wanted to take a quick moment to mention our district closure evaluation processes that we follow during inclement weather. Each day, our staff works tirelessly to help ensure that we can provide a safe and nurturing environment for each school community. Fortunately, sometimes Mother Nature doesn't cooperate with us, and we have to make the difficult decision to either delay the start of the school day or close our schools and district offices. In working to decide the best path forward for our school communities, we evaluate current site conditions, examine current and forecasted weather patterns, and also work with our city and town government partners to help get a proper assessment of how a storm or upcoming inclement weather will likely impact our district. The safety of each student and staff member in our buildings is and will continue to be our top priority, and we sincerely appreciate your patience and support. Finally, as you may have heard, January is designated as School Board Appreciation Month, and on behalf of our students, families, staff members, and community, I want to personally thank each and every board member for all that they do. Later on this evening, I will have the opportunity to read a special proclamation commemorating this very special month, but to the Board of Education, thank you so much for your tireless service. We really appreciate it. Okay, now I would like to invite Mr. Zach Mosher to come forward. So this evening, so Zach's going to make his way up to the podium, and we are excited to recommend Mr. Zach Mosher as the interim director of finance here in the Thompson School District. Mr. Mosher comes to T S D from the city of Fort Collins, where he has spent the past six years as a financial analyst. In this role, Zach acted as a liaison between the city CFO and police services to provide clarity in financial results with operations. He also partnered with risk management to help enhance and reevaluate insurance funding and coverage policies and provided timely and accurate financial results with data aggregation. Prior to his work with the city of Fort Collins, Zach spent three years working for C S U as an accountant. In that role, he monitored, maintained, reconciled, and analyzed the financial activities for the C S U system and produced year-end financial statements. Zach holds a bachelor's degree in finance from C S U. He's been with us for two, less than two weeks. About a week, but seems like two weeks, huh? Seems like, Zach's working really hard, we are excited to have him aboard. So Zach, welcome to T S D.
Thank you, board members. Thanks for having me. I'm humbled and grateful that you chose me as your interim finance director. It's a great, great opportunity for me, and I'm really excited to be a part of it. My family is comfortable online, I'm a school teacher. My sister is a principal at P S D. My wife is a school teacher, my mom's a school teacher. So it's really exciting to be a part of this process and see if I can. I know I can actually add a lot of value and just help with your questions and making the financial aspect of education clearer and hopefully easier. So I appreciate the opportunity, and I thank you all for giving me a chance.
Thank you. So next, we're going to move on to our top of Thompson and Community Champion recognition for the month of January. Each month, we recognize employees from each of our three employee groups, our classified, our licensed, and our A P T, which is our administrative group. These are peer-nominated, so any employee can nominate someone else for this recognition. And in a moment, we'll be inviting these individuals to come forward. When you come forward, if you could please speak from the podium, you'll also notice that there's a small plaque on there. So after you're finished sharing the words, we ask that you also present the plaque. We also have a Community Champion Award, and each month, again, we recognize a member or group or business or nonprofit or some organization from within our community that has tremendous impact on our schools or within our district. So we'll be recognizing that as well. So first, I'm going to start with classified, and so I'm going to invite Kristen Batigie to come forward. And we are recognizing Jeff Smith, who is the day custodian lead at Lucille Irwin Middle School.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. Yes, okay. Did I do it right? I got it, okay. Members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Chris Batigie, Director of Operations. So I get the honor of recognizing Jeff Smith, our lead, daily custodian at Lucille Irwin tonight. Gregory Morrell nominated him, wasn't able to be here tonight, so I get two. This man has been amazing ever since I started my job. So this is Greg, Gregory speaking. Ever since I started my job there, not only does he never miss a day, but he has been covering for me while I've been down and out. He's consistently had my back, and he's taught me quite a bit about the job. I honestly look up to him. I would call Jeff a leader because he's in the front, leading the way, as opposed to someone behind telling you what to do. He works hard, and he cares about all the kids in his school, their health and their safety. And I can also speak from my experience in the operations team. Jeff is an amazing member of our department, and I'm so excited to be able to present this honor.
Congratulations, Jeff.
Next, we want to move on to our licensed. This evening, we're going to be recognizing Tamara Bagley, who is an I L C E S S teacher at Loveland High School. And Tamara was nominated by Elena Bruce and Taylor Bushy. Is that right? Oh, not bad, okay, come on up, please.
Hi, everyone, I'm Taylor Bushy. I'm one of the school social workers at Loveland High School, and I'm one of the ones that nominated Tammy. And what I wrote for my nomination is that I nominate Tammy for her exceptional dedication as an E S S intensive learning center teacher. Despite the challenges of integrating new students with extremely high needs, Tammy has consistently provided compassionate and individualized care for all of her students. She balances their unique needs with grace and ensures her parents are well-supported, all while maintaining an incredibly positive and caring environment. Tammy's commitment to her students and her team truly exemplifies the heart of special education.
I'm Elena Bruce, and I'm the effective learning center teacher at Loveland High School. So I'm working quite a bit with Tammy this year. And I had to say that Tammy is an outstanding advocate for our I L C learners. She's committed to providing them the skills that they need to be successful in the post-secondary world. Her tireless efforts ensure that each student grows in his or her skills, that they can become as independent as he or she can. She gives the students the ability to advocate for themselves and find what they need to make themselves successful in both school and the community. You will not find another teacher with Tammy's dedication towards her students in the E S S community.
And congratulations. And Tammy and Jeff will be taking a picture in a minute with you. Yep, so before we do that, we want to do our community champion. This evening, we are recognizing Silver Mine Subs. And that will be Stephanie Hancock will be representing Silver Mine Subs. And they were nominated by Kimberly Cronin. So Kimberly and Stephanie can come up, that'd be great.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Cronin. I run the Geometry and Construction Program over at Thompson Valley High School. Stephanie Hancock and Silver Mine Subs deserve recognition for their unwavering support of the T V H S Geometry and Construction Program over the past seven years. Their generosity has consistently contributed to the success of the program's community house-building project in collaboration with Earth and Habitat for Humanity. By providing lunch for our first Saturday build of the school year, they not only nourish the students and volunteers, but also play a vital role in fostering community spirit and helping the program thrive. Their long-term commitment highlights their dedication to education, community service, and support of the T V H S G I C program. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. So we'd like, I'd like to invite the board to take a picture with Stephanie, Tammy, and Jeff, please. Okay, superintendent report almost finished, however, we have one more. As you know, each month, we recognize one of our amazing schools in the Thompson School District, showcasing and highlighting some of the great work that is taking place. And so this evening, I would like to invite Mr. Theo Robeson, who is our executive director of secondary education, to introduce tonight's featured school.
So greetings, Dr. Schaefer, Vice President Boyd, members of the board, of Theo Robeson, Executive Director of Secondary Education. And I'm pleased to be here tonight to welcome our Loveland High School staff members and students and also their principal, Sean Collins. I'll be guiding through the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Robeson, and Dr. Schaefer and the board for inviting us tonight. This is, honestly, this is a real honor, we're really, really excited. So if you don't know who I am, I'm Sean Collins, head of schools for Loveland High School. Go Loveland! But our distinguished speakers tonight is Ellery Ann Bowersville, Josiah Kirill, and Juan Gomez Calzado. So we labeled our presentation today "Learn to Thrive." And here at Loveland High School, we believe that every student needs to thrive, both in and out of school, not just succeed and not just get through, but we need to be able to thrive as we move forward. And as the world begins to change and change rapidly, we need to be able to adjust and change for those circumstances as well. And so that's our vision for every single one of our students that comes through our school is to be able to thrive no matter what the situation or the circumstances might rise. So in order to do that, one of the things that we've done at Loveland High School is we had an I B Continuum Day on January seventh. We had both Coyote Ridge, Lucille Irwin, and Loveland High School. All three of those schools together were working together to try to address the issues and concerns around trying to help students thrive in and outside of the school. And we worked on basically looking at a lot of the skills that are needed in order to be able to do that, and we're going to talk about that in just a few seconds. But the great thing about this is it was teachers teaching teachers. And it was our own professionals and our own experts inside of our district that were able to help support and be able to do this. And it was an amazing opportunity, and I want to say thank you for everybody that was able to be there. So thank you very much. So as part of Loveland High School and around I B, we strive towards what we call the I B learner profile. And this profile coincides directly with the portrait of a graduate that we have right here at T S D. The portrait of a graduate, and I'll just remind everybody real quick, is about being a communicator, critical thinker, a self-advocate, and a collaborator. And as you look up here on this screen, you'll see a lot of these kinds of skills that we're looking at here at Loveland High School. And these skills here are what is going to help make our students thrive as they move forward. Here at Loveland High School, one of the other things that we work for when it comes to thriving is we offer a large multitude of opportunities for kids. Whether it becomes through the general education process, all the way up through the diploma program, as well as A P and current enrollment. And some of my students here right here, you're going to hear tonight, they're going to be talking a little bit about that. We are working also in developing a career-related studies program where kids who are working around the world of C T E can earn credit and earn industrial certifications here at Loveland High School, too. So we are approaching all aspects when it comes to thriving in our world. Next slide, please. So a couple of things around, a couple of things around the piece around here at Loveland High School. We also have the dual-language program. The goals for T S D are up on the board. We've added, as far as our goals for Loveland High School, about being open-minded, enquires, reflective, polter, competent, and globally aware. All of these things coincide with what we have as far as that learner profile and the goals that we have set for our students for thriving. The last piece of this, when it comes to the dual-language program we are offering here at Loveland High School, is right currently, we're offering advanced Spanish four. We have freshmen who are offering college credit at the freshman level for Spanish, as well as next year, these same students are getting college credit as sophomores at advanced Spanish level five. And so as you can see, we offer a multitude of opportunities. And I'm just going to turn it over the rest of the time for myself and for you guys to hear from these amazing students about what they see as their work around thriving as they move forward. So, Ellery Ann?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ellery Ann Bowersville, I'm a current junior at Loveland High School.
I'm a current junior at Loveland High School. And as a Unified Sports Partner, I regularly have the privilege of interacting with individuals with a diverse set of skills. I feel an immense joy from brainstorming ways to help an athlete overcome a challenge, regardless of its nature. The athletes feel an immense joy from being included. Inclusivity is vital at Loveland High School. We know that everyone deserves to have their worth celebrated. This enables all of us to thrive. My experiences at Loveland High School have taught me that anyone can thrive with the right support, and it is okay to ask for help. I know these same skills will ensure that I persist through future challenges as well, both college and beyond. Through my participation in Loveland High School athletics, music, IB, and AP academic pursuits, student council, and volunteering in my Loveland community, I've learned active participation and the profound impact it can have on one's sense of self and belonging. Thank you.
My name is Josiah Crill, and I'm also a junior at Loveland High School. About a year ago, right around this time, I decided that I was going to enroll into the IB Diploma Program. And that is a two-year commitment. And basically, I signed my life away for the next two years, picked out my schedule, chose all my classes, everything like that, all those things. And it's probably one of the best decisions that I've made academically throughout my years. And that's because not only is it academically rigorous and challenging, which I greatly appreciate, it's also taught me lots of other skills that are super valuable for my life outside of school. IB has taught me things like time management and collaboration, communication, self-advocacy. All of these things that are going to be super beneficial to my life from high school through college to my career, et cetera, from there. I've learned how to manage deadlines and how to talk to people, and all of these really fantastic skills that I don't think I necessarily would have been able to get at this level without IB and things like that. So, listen up. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Juan Gomez Calzado, student at Loveland High School. I'm a freshman. I'm one of the students at the Dual Language Program. And I'm going to be talking a bit about that. So the Dual Language Program is taught, the Spanish class, taught by teachers from Spanish-speaking countries. So that's really good, to be able to talk and to thrive with them, as well as learning a lot about cultures from many Spanish-speaking countries around the world. And for a career after high school, this class really teaches you to be able to speak it and to interact with other people from these countries and from other countries, even if they're not a native language.
So again, thank you guys very much for this opportunity to come up here and talk a little bit about Loveland High School and all of the amazing things that we have to offer. And as you can see, we have everything from athletes, and we have students who are part of activities and clubs. And so it's really an absolutely fascinating and great time to be here at Loveland High School and to watch all these kids thrive. So thank you very much, and go Loveland!
Stay here for a second, guys.
Just for a second, guys.
Yeah, any questions? I do have a question, so while the rest of you are thinking. So here you are, speaking to us as a couple of Loveland High Juniors and a Loveland High Freshmen. Where do you see yourself 10 years from now? And how does the experience that you just talked with us about kind of fit in or lead in to that experience? And by the way, we aren't going to hold you to it. And if you change your mind in two weeks, that's okay. But at this moment in time, what do you see yourself doing in 10 years? And what has this program contributed to that particular idea?
So personally, I'm interested in pursuing a healthcare profession. And in 10 years, I see myself in a hospital setting, potentially pursuing something along the lines of anesthesiology. And through what Loveland High School has taught me, specifically through Unified, I'm able to now see a skillset that somebody might have. It might be very different from mine, it might be similar. And I'm now able to work with that skillset that they have and be able to make it so that they are truly able to thrive, going back to Mr. Collins's main idea. And in a hospital setting specifically, that's going to be super important because I'm going to maybe have a patient that's unconscious and getting them to breathe, and just how their body functioning is going to be my goal. And then there might be a patient that, you know, could potentially be working on rehab and beginning to walk. There are going to be so many different stages in taking people where they're at and making it so that they feel that joy and happiness and acceptance. It's just key.
I would really like to be an engineer. That's my goal. I don't really know right now what type of engineering I would like to go into, but I know that it's not necessarily going to be easy. It's very math-heavy and science-based, and it's going to be a struggle. And I'm aware of that, and I'm okay with that. And I think that some of the skills that I've picked up, like time management and stuff like that, is going to be super beneficial for that, just because I know it's not going to be easy, and I'm going to have to put some effort in, for sure. But I think that I'm more prepared now than I was at this stage, for sure.
Thank you.
Me, I still don't really know what I want to do for my career later, after high school. But I do know that I really want to travel, see the world. So I think this class is going to be really good, learn about culture and the language.
Before I ask the board colleagues whether anybody has a question, I want to make sure that those of you who are here and those who perhaps are listening at home know that they didn't know ahead of time what they were going to be asked, or even if they were going to be asked. But what's always impressive in a situation like this is how poised and confident they are to be able to speak on the spur of the moment, to talk to a group of adults about where they see themselves, or what they like about their school, or the program in which they're involved, or whatever. So excellent job, guys. Any other comments or questions from my board colleagues?
Let's give them a hand. Thank you. Professor Collins, you'd like to do a picture? Principal Collins, I'd like to take a picture with the board.
All right. We're moving now to item 5.5 on the agenda, which is Board and Committee Reports. What I've asked by board colleagues to do this evening is to talk about a project, or an activity, or a service that Thompson School District offers students. And so I didn't ask them to let me know ahead of time what they were going to talk about, so I'm going to be very interested to hear what project or activity or service they've chosen. So Dawn, can I start with you?
So I had a very hard time picking just one. But I landed on Ascend. So it is a program where students can do a year of college, like their fifth year of school, paid for. And it's one of those just amazing resources available that makes college a little bit more affordable for students. It gives them additional options, and it's an investment in their future. So in addition to the concurrent enrollment and certifications and all the other things that may also come up from some of my colleagues, this partners really well. So my youngest is going to do a year of certifications in her senior year, and then do the fifth year with Ascend and get everything she needs. And it's exciting, and it's opened up new possibilities. And all of a sudden, she's like, maybe I'm going to do something different now. And like the, what I just saw her light up with when there was somebody talking about her future who really cared about what she was interested in and the possibilities was super fun. So I love that we have just one more way that we can make future attainable for people.
Thank you. We'll skip Amy for now. Nancy, share with us.
While we were asked to talk about a TSD program that is offered, and there are many great things that the district does well, I cannot ignore the results of the audit, which has highlighted serious deficiencies in the way we operate. The audit findings are alarming, and yet, the auditor's discovery of these issues is also good news. This is an opportunity to be fully transparent with the community and recognize that we must talk openly about what the failures are and what the plan is to rebuild the Finance Department as the guardian of all district resources and assets to ensure the integrity of our financial data and reports. This is an opportunity for the Board to embrace their fiduciary duty and ensure tax dollars are spent on the classroom and that we have the processes and reports needed to ensure legal and policy compliance is being followed and transparent with all things financially. Our focus, our time, our energy must be on ensuring that taxpayers trust us with their money, and they've made clear that that trust has been broken. Without their trust, we may not have the money to continue so many of our amazing programs. We need to ask the hard and uncomfortable questions and where and how we have failed, and our obligations to ensure that every penny we spend is to improve academic achievement for all the students. The concerns of the community are valid, and the continued dismissal of how taxpayers feel will ensure that a much-needed bond is never passed. There are many changes at the federal level coming our way that will require difficult discussions, respect for different views, and hard decisions. It is time we unite as a governing body for the district and focus on debating the merits of ideas and solutions versus rejecting ideas and solutions based on politics, personalities, and majority versus minority. It is time we lead the district with respect, integrity, and humility.
So I was going to talk about, sort of also related to our three young visitors today regarding all the career exploration options that are offered throughout the district. And there's a whole array from when kids are really little, they can have, you know, there's career days where people come in and talk to them about different jobs to get them maybe interested in something they might want to pursue in the future. Up to as when people get older and at the high school age are able to do internships and apprenticeships in all different areas, in healthcare, in, you know, technology, in different engineering. I mean, sort of all over the thing can go to, there's a, I know there's a day coming up at UNC, the shadow in the Education Department over there for people who are interested maybe in becoming teachers. We do have students who are working as teachers' aides and helpers, teachers' helpers now as they continue their school. And so I think it's just really neat that there are so many different ways for kids to learn about all sorts of different careers as they progress through their schooling, to help them try out all sorts of different things and think about what they ultimately want to be.
Thank you. Denise?
Thanks, Ellen. That's a great lead, and I actually picked one of those pathways to talk about. So the Hospitality and Food Production, Food Production Pathway is something that there is, a set of courses that are offered across the district-sized schools. And we have, all the way from elementary careers in nutrition as an intro class, all the way to internship as the capstone of that program. These are concurrent enrollment classes at the Metropolitan State of Denver. The students can complete the program and have six college credits going into whatever they do next after leaving Thompson. And I was blown away to learn that we have a great house and students across the district that touch this pathway in some way. They may not do the full thing, but they are taking the classes and learning these important skills around catering and food safety, how to manage a kitchen, and, you know, start a business. There's a lot of entrepreneurship that goes into this program. And so, and at the same time, we've had over 100, 150 students get their Safe Server Food Handler Certification, another 25 the Safe Server Manager Certification. And LHS is adding a new Pathway for ID Diploma on the Hospitality Pathway. And then Thompson, their Pro Start Management Team came in third place last year in statewide competition. And these are real skills that our students can take out into the world, real certifications that will help them move quickly in the hospitality field when they choose to go that way. Or take those credits to college and get a good financial investment for their family having a bigger success.
Thank you, Denise. Amy, I'll turn it back to you.
So I am going to talk about a club at a middle school that, again, is a base for students learning, students participating in our world today. It's a club at Erwin, Lucille Erwin Middle School called No Place For Hate. The club is No Place for Hate. Erwin was designated a No Place for Hate school in 2010. The purpose of the club is to provide a learning community of inclusivity, respect, and equity, and everyone has a role to play. The, what I find most, what I love about this club is their resolution of respect. And it is at the school, it hangs there. And their pledge is, "I pledge from this day forward to do my best to combat prejudice and to stop those who because of hate or ignorance would hurt people or violate their civil rights. I will try at all times to be aware of my own biases and seek to gain understanding of those I perceive as being different from myself. I will speak out against all forms of prejudice and discrimination. I will reach out to support those who are targets of hate. I will think about specific ways my community members can promote respect for people and create a prejudice-free zone. I firmly believe that one person can make a difference and that no person can be an innocent bystander when it comes to opposing hate. I recognize that respecting individual dignity, achieving equality, and promoting intergroup harmony are the responsibilities of all people. By signing this pledge, I commit myself to making a positive impact in my community." So this is, you know, a club that middle schoolers are, it's a robust club at Erwin, and I just wanted to give it some recognition here.
Thanks, Amy. I'm going to tell you a little bit about a program called McKinney-Vento. McKinney-Vento supports students and families who are experiencing homelessness. The McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act is a federal law that benefits children and youth who are identified as homeless or unhoused under a federal definition. Thompson School District assists these students in several ways. Number one, with school enrollment. Number two, with transportation to and from their school of origin, with access to free meals, educational programs, and extracurricular activities, and also providing referrals for healthcare and other support services. Thompson School District has a McKinney-Vento Coordinator. The program is also supported by a number of local churches in various ways. So thank you, Board, for sharing in the variety of ways that you did. And we will now move to Agenda Item 5.6, which is Public Comment. And Dawn, would you read the introduction to Public Comment?
Public comments and questions at a regular meeting may deal with any topic related to the Board's conduct of the schools. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concern them, but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly. The Board encourages the discussion of all personnel matters to be conducted in executive session. The Board President shall be responsible for recognizing all speakers who shall properly identify themselves, for maintaining proper order, and for adherence to any time limits set. Questions regarding investigations shall be referred to the Superintendent for consideration and later response. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker to ensure that all have a chance to speak. Um, so, when you start, you'll get a green light. When you have thirty seconds left, it'll go to yellow and beep, and when, um, you're out of time, it will go red, and it will keep beeping at you. First up is Ann Bradbury.
Dr. Schaefer, staff, and Board members, school Board members. I would like to wish you Happy New Year, first of all. It's a new year, clean slate. It's good. Um, I would like to speak to the recent audit results. From what I have read and understand, it appears that findings are showing many weaknesses in the internal controls of the Thompson School District. It appears these results show the CFO of the district was not really keeping his eye on the ball. It seems that at least a hundred thousand dollars has to be utilized to pay for the internal mistakes made. This is money that will not be spent on academics in the classroom, which is a shame for the students and the teachers. I think it's unacceptable. Really, we gotta, we gotta do better with our budget. We really do, finances and budget. It appears that there's been a huge lack of transparency along with the politics getting in the way, and decisions have been made that do not match up with honesty and integrity. Our citizens in our community, students, teachers, and families deserve better. Director Rumfeld has suggested since two thousand and twenty-one, I might add, to have a financial budget committee which would keep an audit in check and above board. I believe this makes perfect sense in any organization from the oversight perspective. Sometimes we just need that oversight. Uh, Director Rumfeld is a very qualified professional accountant, and she really does understand numbers. I believe you should all listen to what she has to say on financial decisions and other issues as well. I've been here before, and I, it appears that every suggestion she has is turned away or rejected. Please think about the greater good and listen to what she has to suggest. It could save the school district financial embarrassment, plus it gives the teachers and the students a better education in the classroom. It's a new year, again, a clean slate, and I'd like to end with Psalm one thirty-three, one, how good and pleasant it is when God's people live together in unity, and that includes working together as well. Thank you for your time.
Emily Chapman.
First, I'd like to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come here and speak directly to people with the power to enact and enable changes. Um, I am a student, a, a senior at Hocken Valley High School, and I am here today to bring awareness to a problem that I've noticed. I've spoken to several of my peers, some teachers, and even parents who also agree that this is a problem, um, parking lot safety and security. Today, I will be speaking purely about Hocken Valley, but that by no means means that this problem applies only to Hocken Valley. Um, so, um, there's many problems we see in parking lots from, like, doing wheelies in the morning when it's snowy outside, um, going there after hours, throwing parties, beer cans on the ground in the grass, glass bottles shattered over the parking lot, um, vendor vendors. And I think we should address and at least, um, acknowledge that these issues are present. After speaking to several people at my school, our Dean of Students and Secretary, Quinn, some issues he thought that were important, where he, he would like to advocate, and I am advocating for a better surveillance system as we have cameras, but they are not always as effective as they could be. In a recent incident, one of my classmates' car was keyed on school property during school hours. Unfortunately, due to the unfortunate camera placement, the security was not able to pick up who did it as the camera was blocked by trees. And so, I'm advocating perhaps for a better camera placement. Um, but there, as it is a high school, uh, they're not the best drivers, so accidentally getting others is not uncommon in high school, and a lot of high schoolers, especially when and if they own their own car, it is their pride and joy as it is probably the most, um, expensive asset they own. And so, it would cause issues there. Um, other teachers have stated that, um, other issues that are present are just kids going there after hours, and so, a possible solution to that is to have more posted signage or even gates that can lock people out of the parking lot after hours, as several members of the, the security team at Hocken Valley and rather than they do, but they think that, um, people should not be in the parking lot outside of the policy.
David Cook.
My name's David Cook. Been here before. I'm a resident of Loveland. My children were schooled in these schools. I'm also the Colorado Coordinator for the Center for Government Accountability, with the right and duty to inform those, this Board and others when it is outside legal limits, and if necessary, lead the correction immediately. The state of Colorado, to become a state, as well as a territory, agreed to follow the Articles of the Ordinance of seventeen eighty-seven, passed by Congress, signed by President Washington, and defined by the Supreme Court of the United States. In order to become a state, that's the only reason we are a state. We went along with that. Our Constitution had to go along with that. That law and curriculum is very clear. It's still in effect, and it's still the, Article Three, Sentence One pertains to schools. This is federal law. Religion, morality, and knowledge being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind, schools and the means of instruction shall forever be encouraged. What is the encouragement? This is the encouragement, and all that goes with it. This Board has been informed of the law for educational curriculum. The First Amendment redress agreement was presented. Nothing was done to correct the curriculum to follow the law. We're now still continuing, an extensive discussion of that law was presented here. Nothing came of it. We are now still continuing to propagandize our children in the secular humanist doctrine that is in direct contradiction to that law according to the Supreme Court and the United States of America. Since the courts and the justice system had not followed it, to make this school board accountable, or any school board for that matter, through the law, the people may now exercise their right of, quote, alteration and abolishment, in the right-of-man law in the Declaration of Independence, the first law of the United States, to correct this problem by making members of school boards accountable personally, in their persons, in their, uh, funds, in their, everything they own. That may get a little bit messy. Each of you have a copy of the substantial amount of information on the back of this copy, or in the spelling, I was a little worried. That's all I have to say about that.
Frankie Torres.
First, I want to applaud the House Bill at the federal level for the Protection of Women and Girls in Sports Act of two thousand and twenty-five. This bill prohibits school athletic programs and allowing individuals whose biological sex at birth is male participate in programs that are for women or girls. This is a step in the right direction. When this becomes law, I hope our district will be early adopters of this and rewrite our district policies. Next, I'm here tonight not to address the Board, but rather to call to action our community to wake up and pay attention to what is happening in this district. My personal experience with district leaders and this Board is its avoidance to address questions and its unwillingness to act. Tonight, the Board is going to approve a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar invoice to be paid for audit firm. I would like to think this community should be aware of our money bought. I should, I want to highlight a few items from the audit report that should be a concern of this community. Challenges we face, continued declining enrollment in this district, less revenue per student, less mill levy revenue, facility utilization, i.e. school closings, inability to successfully recruit and retain staff, and continued increase in costs and expenditures. Also called out in the audit was two adjustments made to prior year financial statements, one for forty-three million dollars and one for six point seven million. Both adjustments significantly impacted this district's financial position. When one reads words like "lack of internal controls," "lack of supervision," "lack of training," "lack of timely filing," "of mandatory reports," "inadequate skills and knowledge of personnel," "out of compliance with grant-funded programs," "not following federal policy and our own district policies," we as a consummate community should be very concerned. Later on tonight, this Board will be approving the amended twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I want to call out a few specific items on that. The amendments are a two million decline in projected revenue, five point nine million dollars of amended expenditures for a total of seven point nine million dollars, which again drastically reduces or erodes this district's net financial position. It's my assumption that the majority of district leaders and Board members don't understand these financial statements. Clearly, there was no interest in the audit findings, as only two Board members attended the audit finding meeting on January sixteenth. It is time for this district and Board to be fully transparent with this community. If we as a community fail to hold leaders accountable, we will be left cleaning up their mess in the coming years. Be warned when I say that in the next two years, or if not sooner, there will be an exodus of this leadership. Who will be left to answer the mess that it can leave behind?
Robert Rumfeld.
Good evening. Greetings, Dr. Schaefer, Vice President of the Board, members of the Board. I come to you this evening to voice my concern as a taxpayer, taxpayer citizen of Thompson School District. There's no point in sugarcoating the audit findings. The district failed the audit. Plant Moran uncovered mismanagement of district resources, a lack of process and internal controls by the Finance Department, and a total lack of accountability. So, I'm asking, where was the oversight? The mismanagement and material weaknesses extend to the handling of the two thousand and eighteen bond. I would like to know how much of the hundred and eighty-five million dollar bond money was spent using the no-bid contract system. I live in a contractor world. No-bid contracts are not the norm, especially when dealing with large construction or repair projects. There's an example of a no-bid contract in this Board packet tonight. It's the one point two million dollar roof repair at Mountain View High School. This is a no-bid project because it's classified as professional services. An example of a professional service is accounting, bookkeeping, advertising, marketing, event management, legal services, things of that nature. Roof repair doesn't fit the description of this category. In my opinion, it's a workaround to avoid going to get bidding of, through the bidding process. That's just my opinion. Plant Moran's findings also discovered material weaknesses in six areas. This is alarming on so many levels, and I'm wondering how these major deficits in daily operations of the district Finance Department went unnoticed for so long. Renowned King Plant Moran an additional one hundred thousand dollars in consulting fees to help them work with district staff to fix the material weaknesses in Finance Department. It's well past time to completely overhaul the budget process and create a Finance Committee that has the authority to provide real oversight. My opinion, you know, this is an opportunity for you guys to lead, to do something different, to be innovative, think outside the box. There's, as mentioned earlier, with the election, there's gonna be budget cuts to education, and a lot of other departments comes up. You guys should think about that and have a backup plan.
So, we have one calling, it's two.
Hello, this is Karen. My middle one in Arizona called around the, in the mountain view high. I am calling in asking about how the defending woman from ginger ideology extreme restoring biological truth to federal government act, who is going to affect our non-binary students. I know schools are grant-funded, but they're funded federally funded. This became a certain concern of mine yesterday when my child and some of their friends were brutally attacked yesterday about being openly non-binary. My concern is for the safety in most of these students and how the harassment is going to be addressed, and also, I have a concern about the D E I program, if they're also going to continue to as well. Um, like I said, this is strictly about if we're going to continue our non-binary programs, if they're gonna be able to keep them, and if the harassment is gonna be dealt with, or anything else on this line on. Thank you very much. You have a great day.
That concludes Public Comment. We'll move then to the next Agenda Item, which is Action Consent Items. I'll begin by briefly list. There are seven items that are part of Action Consent. Then I'll ask my Board colleagues if anyone wants to have an item pulled off Action Consent and moved into discussion action. So, the seven items currently part of Action Consent are approval of personnel, extra duty, and coaching is six point one. Six point two is approval of expenditures over fifty thousand dollars. Six point three, approval of the proposed two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five amended budget update. Six point, uh, four is approval of contract as presented and the associated project budget for Mountain View High School. Six point five is approval of leased vehicle contract. Six point six is approval of the EPA electric bus grant contract, and six point seven is the National School Board Recognition Month. Would any of my Board colleagues like any of these items removed from Action Consent?
Yes, Vice President Board would like six point two, six point three, six point four, and six point six removed from the consent agenda. agenda.
All right. All right. So the procedure is that this doesn't, is subject to a vote. When something is asked to be removed from action consent, it automatically moves to the next part of the agenda, which is discussion action. So we will be then talking about and approving the following parts of action consent, and they are 6.1, approval of personnel, extra duty, and coaching recommendations. 6 point... Just a second here. 6.5, Nancy, is that the next one that you've not asked to be removed? Okay. 6.5, approval of leased vehicle contract. And 6.7, National School Board Recognition Month. So, does anyone else want to request removal from the action consent of any of the three remaining items? If not, then I entertain a motion to approve the action consent agenda containing these three items.
So moved.
And that needs a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Laurlee, will you call the roll, please? Dr. Shaver. Of course.
To some degree, the proclamation for School Board Recognition Month, whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and ever-changing world, and whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child, and whereas local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students, and whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system, and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now, therefore, we declare our appreciation to the members of the Thompson School District Board of Education and proclaim January 2025 as School Board Recognition Month in Thompson School District. Please join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members and in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children.
All right. Thank you. I believe we're ready to proceed to the vote then on the three items that are still part of action consent. All those, pardon me, Laurlee, would you call the roll, please?
Stu Boyd.
Hi.
Denise Chapman.
Hi.
Amy Dornan.
Hi.
Dawn Kirk.
Hi.
Barbara Cruz. Alexandra Leslam.
Hi.
Nancy Rumpfeld.
Hi.
All right. We'll move then to agenda item seven, which is discussion action items. Originally, there were two items there. There are now going to be six, and so I'll tell you the renumbering, and please help me if I have something out of order here. So 6.2, approval of expenditures over $50,000, that becomes 7.1. 6.3, approval of the proposed 2024-2025 amended budget update, that becomes 7.2. 6.4, approval of contract as presented and the associated project budget for Mountain View High School, becomes 7.3. 6.6, approval of the EPA electric bus grant contract, becomes discussion action item 7.4. And then the two that were originally part of discussion action, approval of the 2023-2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, known as ACFR, that becomes 7.5. And approval of city of level consent to lease, which was previously with a different number, now becomes 7.6. Did I get that correct, board? All right. All right. So we'll now go back and discuss the various items that are part of discussion action, beginning with the one that has now been renumbered as 7.1, which is approval of expenditures over $50,000. Nancy, I'll ask you first to speak to the reason that you've asked for that to be pulled and treated in a different manner, and then we will proceed to questions and comments from the board. So you're on with approval of expenditures over $50,000.
Thank you, Vice President Board. I pulled this mostly just so that there could be a discussion and have awareness around. We originally, the budget was for $65,920 for this audit, and it is now up to $145,000. And as we'll see in the amended budget, it looks like we're estimating maybe another $10,000 to come in. So my questions for this, and I'm not really sure. Todd, Mr. Bracconi is the, he is the lucky guy.
I guess I should play the lot instead of.
My questions are, and it might be a combination of you and Dr. Schaefer answering, is I'd like to understand why is this audit was going on that when we received the 9-1 invoice, which put us at $54,000 of the budget, at that point, I'm sure there was awareness that there were some issues with the audit and that we were most likely going to go over budget. Why wasn't, why wasn't the board informed so that we would not in December suddenly be hit with this, hey, because there was also no invoices in October and November? And then the other question, which is sort of related to this, is doesn't the consulting contract for another $100,000 or so require board approval?
All right. Before actually answering those questions, Todd, I'd like you to make the presentation or if you have a presentation connected with this particular item, and if not, then we can proceed directly to answering the question. Questions?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Lloyd, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. We did not have a presentation because it was on action consent, so it's just the memo that was submitted tonight.
All right.
So what I can say is the question's referred to two invoices that were submitted and paid August, September, which totaled about $55,000. We then did not get another invoice until January, in which that's really the work of the audit was happening. Well, we did do, in the amended budget that was presented now, we did project those invoices, additional expenditures into the amended budgets.
Did that answer both of your questions?
I guess really what I'm looking for is on 9-1, we were at, like you said, the approximate $55,000. At some point, there had to be awareness that there were issues being uncovered during the audit, and rather than the board not finding out till the audit was done, it seems like there should have been a little bit more communication with the board so that A, we would kind of know that there was, this was coming for $145,000 versus almost $66, and that there were going to be issues with the audit.
Dr. Schaefer.
So Plant Moran is, or has been, our new auditing firm. And in, initially in August and September, when they embarked on the initial audit, we didn't have any indication that there were any issues or findings at that time. They had just begun the audit and were navigating and migrating through documentation and all of the information. Since Plant Moran has never audited our district before, this was new for them, and they, they truly did a very thorough and comprehensive audit, which is exactly what we hired them for. But in terms of any initial indications that there were concerns or errors or issues or findings, back in August and September, that was not known to us. And as we got closer to late November than early December, we became aware that there were some findings that the audit was still going forward because they were still uncovering and finding other matters. At that time, when I had my first meeting with Plant Moran, the auditors, and then our interim chief financial officer, I was made aware of these were the preliminary initial findings. Again, they were still auditing. And immediately informed, I mean, we held, we had our board working session done in Colorado Springs. At that time, we provided to the board a initial high-level preliminary findings of some of the things that they had identified, knowing still that the audit was still continuing, so nothing was finalized. It wasn't actually finalized, finalized to even beyond that. But I will, I just want to underscore that during those, those initial months, or at least the August, September timeframe, I, we had no indication that there were, there were any findings at that time as they were just initially embarking in the audit.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Now, I believe the auditor is here to present later?
There is a discussion item for the ACFR.
Then I'll probably do a follow-up at that time, but thank you.
So I, Todd, do you have anything else you would like to say on this particular matter before I ask other board members and Nancy for additional comments or questions?
No.
All right. So I'm going to begin this time with Dawn. Dawn, do you have any questions or comments relative to the movement of this particular item to discussion action? All right. Denise, I'm going to go to you next. Any questions or comments? Alexandra?
Not really. I guess, I mean, I appreciate the answers, and I think, you know, it did end up to be more than any of us expected, but I think it's, seems appropriate, and I think we're getting, we're getting the services that we pay for, both through the thoroughness of the audit and then helping us fix the, fix the issues that need to be fixed.
All right. Nancy, you have the opportunity to ask a couple of questions. Do you have a comment?
No.
Going forward? All right. Amy? All right. And nor do I. So I believe we're ready to proceed to a vote on discussion action item 7.1. So I need a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we approve 7.1, approval of expenditures over $50,000.
Thank you, that needs a second.
Second.
I heard both Amy and Dawn, so Laurlee, I guess just pick whichever one, because they kind of did it in chorus. Any further discussion? Again, this is on newly numbered item 7.1, which is approval of expenditures over $50,000. Hearing no further discussion, Laurlee. Hold the board, please.
Stu Boyd.
Hi.
Denise Chapman.
Hi.
Amy Dornan.
Hi.
Dawn Kirk.
Hi.
Barbara Cruz. Alexandra Leslam.
Hi.
Nancy Rumpfeld.
Hi.
All right. So the vote was six to zero, and so we will move forward then. Item 7.2, with the renumbering, is approval of the proposed 2024-2025 amended budget. Nancy, you wanted to ask for it to be pulled, so if you would just give a quick explanation or the reason that you're doing that, don't necessarily ask any questions at this point. We'll have, I'll ask Todd if there's a presentation on, there is a presentation on this one, and then we'll go back to the rotation of questions. So go ahead, and if you'll explain why you asked for it to be pulled.
I pulled this from the consent agenda due to our work-study session on January 8th. We only had the changes in revenue at that time to discuss and go over. We did not have a presentation that had any adjusted expenses. And last night about 6:00 PM, that presentation was sent over to us and made public, and so I do believe it's appropriate that we have a public discussion about this rather than it be on the consent agenda.
All right. So if you'll go ahead and do your presentation, and then we'll go through the rotation of the board members again with comments and questions.
Great, thank you again, Vice President Lloyd, and board members, Dr. Schaefer. Topic, we sit in superintendent operations. Annually, as Board Member Rumpfeld mentioned, we go through a amended budget process this time of year. By Colorado State statute, we are required to submit the amended budget by January 31st. As we discussed, we did review the initial adjustments to revenue in the initial board meeting on January 8th. Tonight, we do have updated expenditures, proposed expenditures, and we will, I will briefly go through those and answer your questions that you might have. So as you can see here, this is just the general fund balance that was previously presented. I will note on this, there are still some minor adjustments that we'll move forward and adjust, mostly with the beginning fund balances. So just a note on, on those pieces. On the next slide, you'll see the per people revenue was adjusted down this year, $44. The funded people count, then obviously was adjusted, and then that goes into School Finance Act and formulas for our funding and charter schools. So the overall change in revenue from the PPR is a negative $675,000. Next slide is our adjusted MLO revenue. Really, through all four of these sections, what it comes down to is a negative adjustment of right at $1.2 million to the MLO revenue. Most is from the 2018 millennial write-off. On the next slide, this is something that we started now. I say that because in the past, we have always updated revenues. At this time, we did update the expenditure budget as well. So this is something, you know, to show the board and community where we're at as of really today on our projected budget. So the items listed 1 through 12 are items that either have been previously committed or reviewed and found in the last short timeframe. So what staff did is take really a snapshot of all these items, either projected a few out and/or looked at the actual cost at what you see here. The, for example, number three, the Medicaid reallocation, that is something that is a new expenditure that's on this report. That's something as we were going through and looking at expenditures, Medicaid allowance, the FTE from that switched to general fund rather than Medicaid. So going forward, we are budgeting for those FTE that were on Medicaid and the general fund balance. So we go through and look at, you know, I use that as an example. When you look at number one, that was a stipend, it was a previously approved by the board, the expenditures coming out of this year, even though the outperformance was out of FY '24. So just going through, look at going through all of them, those are the items and the expenditures to date that we could project for for this year's amended budget. So when you look at the total impact of revenue and then the adjusted budget items, it is 5.9 for adjusted expenditures, 1.9 for the adjusted revenue, and an anticipated fund impact of 7.8. So what that takes into account is really in the FY '24, it wasn't outperformance in the budget, so that's what's really included in the 39. It's like the big bucket, but when you take all the, all those adjustments out, leaves an unbalanced of $32 million. So I will pause there and see what questions I can answer.
All right. This time Denise, I'll begin with you. Do you have any questions or comments regarding any part of this presentation?
I don't know.
Alexandra? Nancy?
Yes, I have questions. Yes, I have questions. So as you just pointed out, the, for the adopted budget that we adopted in June, those beginning balances that are in that report don't match the beginning balances that are in this presentation, so some of those adjustments are off. I will tell you that I created a spreadsheet, because it's what I do, and did work through all the math, and I, I show that the actual ending fund balance will be at 29 million plus. So there is a little bit of a difference there. I do think that we need to figure that out. I don't think we can figure it out in time for tonight's vote. I also would point out that the state statute requires that when we are doing budget work, we are supposed to be presented with actual spending from the prior year, with the actual budget from the prior year while we're working on what is the budget for this year. It typically has not ever been done that way, and I have asked for it to be done that way. So I am appreciative that this year, we are at least going in the right direction and getting some expense side adjustments. And I realize that our new interim director of finance has had to put this together rather quickly, so I appreciate that and thank you. The only question I do have on the expenses, because we've already talked about the consulting from Plant Moran and the additional audit expenses, and I know that the telephone hardware, that's coming from the approval of the outperformance, on the additional legal expenses. If I am reading this correctly, we budgeted $149,000, and this is saying that we're going to add 200,000 more to legal expenses, which would mean for this year, basically 350,000 in legal expenses. Because we typically have not ever seen actual spending, I found this number very surprising. Is there any, do you have, can you explain what the overages due to without, in just generic terms? Or is the standard, what has it been in the past?
I would say it's a more, I, what I don't know enough to get into is the election, the legal, you know, for the election and the bond. I think that might have a lot to contribute to it. And then that's projection forward, so the 200 is a projection budget moving forward. So, you know, I think as we move forward and we do some more reports on actuals versus budgeted, you know, we can see where that falls. That's one piece that I know was in there. As far as the other pieces, I don't have any answers far as what makes up the rest of that, but I know the legal fees for, you know, bond initiation, or I don't have the actual number, but it is a substantial number.
Okay. The only other thing I have is that, again, when we did the adopted budget, because of these beginning fund balances are very different, what we passed for a resolution on appropriations isn't even, doesn't even match what the actual adjusted beginning balances are, and the same with the resolution for use of beginning fund balances. Where I find that most concerning is with the building fund 41, where at the time of the adopted budget, the beginning fund balance was going to be 2.3. After adjustments, it's now 467,000. I understand that that's part of the consulting reconciliation work to figure that out, but it does mean that our appropriations resolution and our use of beginning funds resolution have very, very different numbers, and so I do find that concerning. As I also find concerning, when I look to Greeley, and I look to Greeley because they are a very successful district, when they do their appropriations resolution, they do not appropriate all of their general fund beginning balance and all of their revenues. They appropriate only those adopted expenses plus transfers. So it basically puts a cap on how much the district can spend. You can move it around in your lines, but you can't exceed that. The way we do it is we appropriate it all. And I think going forward in the future, we should change that to only appropriate approved expenses and transfers. But do you know that we'll, will we need to adjust those resolutions because of those fund balance changes?
I don't know at this time. It's something we're looking into right now.
And then going forward, as you and I talked, once some things get settled, we can expect some regular reports on actual expense to budget?
Yes, that's something that both Dr. Schaefer and I talked about in community, was doing a, you know, whether it's a, we'll figure out the mechanism, whether it's a presentation or it's a report, but a monthly report showing the, more of the actuals today. So it's done more on a regular basis rather than kind of twice a year.
Okay. And is there enough, one, I'm sorry, one last one. Is there enough room within this that if we do add additional finance staff and/or on the bond manager position, that we decide to have some of it, half of it, all of it come out of the general fund? Is there enough to cover that?
There is, but that's something we come back to the board for your approval anyway, but that is a discussion we'll have and figure out what those few other expenditures are. If we do need to, you know, adjust something else, we'll come back for board approval to to review that.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I, I guess, I know that we're going to be talking about budget in several different places this evening, and one thing that strikes me is that it's easy to get lost in the trees and miss the forest. I'm already doing it, and we were only through two of the items. I am a little concerned that all, that we've got scope creep with all these different things being added at a time when we don't have a CFO and the auditor found that the number one root cause behind our findings was turnover and key personnel. I want to be sure that the board is supporting you to make sure that we don't have a lot more work that does it, like, we need to look at the totality of all these requests in addition to the individual requests on their own merit. And I'm, I'm going to ask that we do that at the end of the night instead of point by point before we add work.
I do have some questions, Todd, and for the benefit of my board colleagues, rather than submitting this, these five questions as an RFI, knowing that he was going to cover these either in the presentation or through the answers to my questions, I felt justified in not submitting this as an RFI because we were all going to hear it tonight, we were all going to hear the, the answers together anyway. So my first question was, was some budget adjustment expected going into the current situation?
Yes, I mean, the, the history of this time of year and the amended budgets, there is typically, you know, an adjustment in the PPR. So last year, it went up by, you know, 1.4 million. This year, of course, it went down. So there is typically, and that's why I set up, due to the finalization of those numbers from the state, there is anticipated budget adjustment to amended budget this time.
And the next question, and I told him when I submitted the question, I understand that he might not be able to answer it, I wondered how much of the budget adjustment was expected. Are you able to give me a figure on that, or is that too out there to be able to do that?
Yeah, I would hate to commit to a number. I would say we know that there is, but yeah, for me to say a number right now would.
All right. Would you say that most school districts believe that an adjustment to the budget at this time of the year is typical?
Yes, it is a pretty standard procedure. It's also part of state statute that by January 31st, we have to submit an amended budget.
All right. Do you know how much the adjustment was last year?
I didn't. Last year.
I don't know that as well.
The MLO adjustment was a negative 350, and the PPR adjustment was a positive 1.4 million.
All right.
There wasn't no expenditure adjustments last year.
Okay. And the last question I submitted was which amounts or items were unexpected? So in other words, now that we are where we are, were there either amounts that were a surprise or items that were unexpected?
You know, I would say as the team took a deeper look into the items you see in front of you, number three, the Medicaid reallocation was probably the one that jumped off or out the, the most. You know, the other ones, as we went through, we, you know, we took a deeper dive in, so I would say that, when you answer your question, that would probably be the one that stood up most.
All right. That takes care of my questions. Does another question occur to any of my board colleagues? Otherwise, I think we're ready to proceed to a motion and then to a vote. So if somebody would make a motion relative to item 7.2.
So moved.
Needs a second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Vice President Boyd, I do.
Pardon?
Vice President Boyd, I do have some discussion.
Okay.
The only thing I would like, would add is that what is required by 2244110.5 for the amended budget is that you review revenues and expenses. Budget is not made up of just revenue. It includes revenue and expenses. So yes, it is typical, every district does an amended budget usually. However, those other districts look at both revenue and expense adjustments. Our board has typically only looked at amending the revenue numbers and not ever amending the expense numbers. And as we can see tonight, it can be significant adjustments, and I know that we probably haven't adjusted all of them, which, when you appropriate 100% of your budget for expenses and beginning fund, then yeah, the district staff does not have to worry about exceeding approved expenses. So I would like us to keep that in mind for future, and the actual top budget reporting monthly is a key requirement for us to carry out our fiduciary obligations. And while I have to understand what's going on in the finance department, it does not negate our fiduciary responsibility to manage and oversee taxpayer money.
So let me make sure I understand. Are you offering this as a suggestion moving forward?
It's simply my commentary on this discussion and this amended budget that we're going to vote on.
All right. Okay, so a motion, a second. Is there any more discussion? Laura Lee, would you call the roll please?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Alexandra Lessland.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpf.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, and that passed also six to nine. We're going to move then to newly numbered approval of contract as presented and the associated project budget for Mountain View High School, which is now numbered as discussion action number 7.3. And we'll do what we get, before Nancy, you're the one who asked if this would be pulled up. So would you give a justification for pulling it off, and then we'll see whether Todd has a presentation or if you have some remarks you'd like to make.
Well, I would say I mostly pulled this based upon Robert Rumpf's comment, which we all know as my husband, and contrary to belief, I never know what he's going to say when he comes to the microphone. So I thought it might benefit to just explain why there wasn't a bid process. You and I discussed it a little bit in your office this afternoon, and I think it might just be helpful for the community as a whole to understand that.
All right. Go ahead, Todd.
Thank you. Yes, on this specific contract, first, I'd like to back up and say, whether it's this contract or other contracts, we have a purchasing department that will make sure we abide by state statute and our board policy. So as in other contracts in this one, this was run through our purchasing department. We do have policy of the states within our professional services that that, or that this contract is considered a special service because they actually engineer the system, the specialized system to be installed. So this fell underneath a professional service, so then we could work with the vendor and then acquire the design in that process. So it is a more, it's a pretty common practice between all school districts, if we look at board policies, you know, here are friends to the north, friends to the south. It is a pretty common practice to have engineers, architects, soil engineers, any type of kind of professional service, ask them when you can go work one-on-one. But regardless of the policy, this still goes through our purchasing department to do the check to make sure we don't bypass or miss anything in board policy and the state statute. So also, there are policies, kind of outside of this, but to expand on it, we have a construction manager, general contractor that the board has seen quite a bit. That's also under professional services that typically in bond work, you know, is a typical contract type that is used throughout the state and actually by the state itself.
All right. We'll proceed then to the rotation of the board. There's Dawn, I'd like to begin with you. Do you have any questions or comments? Denise?
No.
Alexandra?
No.
Nancy?
Yeah.
You have a question or comment? Dawn? I already asked Amy, I'm sorry, I slipped your name out. All right. And I don't either. So I believe we're through with the rotation at this point, so I'll entertain a motion of approval of the newly numbered 7.3, then a second, and then we will have an opportunity for discussion.
So moved.
Someone has something else to say.
Second.
Thank you, Nancy. A second?
Denise, second.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, let's proceed to the vote then. Laura Lee?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessland.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpf.
Aye.
All right. This one also passes six to nothing. We're going to proceed then to discussion action item newly numbered 7.4, approval of the EPA electric bus grant contract. Nancy, as we've done before, if you'd like to speak just briefly to why you asked for it to be pulled, and then Todd, do you have a presentation on this one?
I do not. This was just an MLO.
All right. So after Nancy offers her reason for asking for it to be pulled, I'll ask, do you have any remarks that you'd like to make?
I pulled it from the consent agenda simply because it is known that I do not support this EPA grant nor the state one that was already passed. I know that there will be a funding gap of what size, no one knows, and especially in light of the executive orders that have been signed, I'm not sure of the exact verge, but ending, ending the green energy and so forth, and also hearing members of Congress talking about rolling back the funding for electric vehicles and other green energy programs, it just gives me even more concern that we will be left with a large funding gap. And so that's why I pulled it.
Sorry, would you repeat what you said? We would be left with a large funding, what?
A large funding gap.
Oh, gap, that's right. I thought you said grant.
Because we won't, we won't have the grant, or and/or the grant won't cover all of the costs.
All right. Todd, remarks?
Between, as we see right now, whereas we project both grants, projected cost is covered by the grants. We had both the CPHD and this one together, paying the bus and then just the charters that we installed at transportation. It is covered. If it's not, staff will come back to the board, as is over the board group amount. So if for some reason, as we go out to actually, this being a federal project, as we go out to bid these pieces, if they do come back over the board group amount and grant amount, we would come back to the board prior to proceeding. So as far as the cost, you know, that's, that's where it's there. As far as the, you know, I don't, you know, between executive orders and what that means of actually for us, you know, I can't speak to that. What I do know is our contract with the state and language within the contract does provide protection each way. In saying that, there is, I mean, if there's risk of funding being pulled, we have to be where we're at in the process compared to the termination clauses within, the funding termination clauses within the contract. So there are some pieces that if that were to happen, we would definitely have to be aware we're in the purchasing process and our payment process versus the reimbursement process from the grant. For example, there's, you know, clauses within the states. You know, if the state, if, if funding is pulled, it doesn't necessarily have to be pulled, but if there's no funding, we have to do the district, we reverse up to that, up to that reimbursement spot. You know, so we have to kind of just be aware of that, well, it's that risk that there is some clause within that contract that are in there.
So at this point, you feel that the grant, that or the grants themselves are solid? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
The grants themselves?
I knew from what the process that these funds have already been allocated from, you know, the funding that's already been allocated from, yes. But no one has a crystal ball.
All right, thank you. So going to the rotation then of comments. Alexandra, I'd like to start with you. Do you have a question or comment for Todd about this?
No, I was going to ask another question if I have to. So not at this moment.
Nancy? Do you have another question?
Yes, I still have concern about the funding gap, especially on the buses. The original ballpark estimate was three-ten. The last time that we had a presentation on this, it was thinking, there was the thought that the cost of the buses might be three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand or more, which three hundred and fifty times three does exceed the state grant. And then we still only have the EPA grant to cover the chargers, the infrastructure, training, software, et cetera. The EPA contract was, or the Highland contract was very clear that if we submit reimbursement and the EPA has paused funding, we won't get reimbursed. Or if they terminate funding, we won't get being reimbursed. So I appreciate that you are aware that we need to be very cognizant of where we're at in the process. But again, this is why I do not think it's in the best interest of the district to move forward with this.
All right, Amy? Dawn? Denise? And I don't either. So I think we're ready to proceed to a motion unless Todd, you have any other comments that you would like to make. All right? So I entertain a motion then. We're talking about newly numbered item seven point four, approval of the EPA electric bus grant contract. A motion?
So moved.
And a second? All right. Any further discussion?
Your second at the.
I'm sorry. No further discussion? Then Laurel, would you call the roll please?
Stu Boyd.
Hi.
Denise Chapman.
Hi.
Amy Doran.
Hi.
Don Kirk.
Hi.
Cruz. Alexandra Lessland.
Hi.
Nancy Rumpf.
No.
All right, the vote this time is five to one. All right? We're now going to move to the two items which were originally part of discussion action. Approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual comprehensive financial report known as ACFR. This is now numbered as seven point five. Is there a presentation connected with this?
There is not.
There is not? Okay. Do you have, all right.
Yeah.
Nancy, do you have any remarks that you want to make in regard to why you asked for this one to be pulled?
Which was one, is there?
I'm sorry, it wasn't pulled.
Doesn't the lot of it?
Yeah, so I was going to write, yeah, so as the board previously reviewed the audit on January eighth, you know, tonight is the approval of that. We do have Pam Moran here to answer your questions that the board would like to discuss within this time.
All right. All right.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Jamie Essenmacher. I'm with Pam Moran. I'm the lead audit engagement partner. And today is one of the leads on the audit. His name is Marcus Mark, Marcus Mark Wengren. Thank you.
All right. Would you like to do the presentation first? And then we'll follow with questions? Is that what you have in mind?
We, President Boyd, we were just going to go into more discussion and questions on the audit ideas.
All right. Then, let's see, on the rotation, Nancy, we're going to start with you this time in regard to comments or questions for the auditors.
As I've, as I've said previously, while the audit findings were a little unnerving, I do also see this as an opportunity and is good news for a way for us to change maybe the way that we operate here and proceed with our budget and financial reports. I have a couple of questions for you. The first one would be, and I think you've been listening to some of the discussions, especially around the amended budget process and so forth. From your perspective, from the audit perspective, as the expert here in the room, what would you recommend that the board needs, should ask for to be more effective in their role in completing their fiduciary obligations and not have to have it in?
From a budget perspective, you're asking?
For, from just a, an audit compliance statutory perspective. What do you, what would you recommend we, as a board do?
Sure, so I'll add a couple of comments to that. So I think within our audit report, there's a section there where it talks about auditor recommendations. And we've discussed those with Todd and Mark as it relates to each of the applicable findings. So I think those comments would still stand as to probably the most critical actions to currently take. I think in all cases where we see opportunities for board members to continue to get education and training on school finance and budgeting and different items like that. So they're able to, when they're presented with documents, you know, be able to review them. Properly is also something that we commonly see and also do with various boards across there. I know there's other great associations out there that provide training and other items for board members as it relates to continuing to get that education to bring those types of minds or being able to look at, you know, an audit report and kind of work through that with leadership.
And would you agree that, would you, do you agree that the number one root cause for all of these things that you discovered is lack of time and bandwidth from the finance department?
I think there's probably a number of overall arching items that probably created the perfect storm in sense of what happened. And I think working closely as we did, as things kind of transpired throughout the process is a way, you know, to continue to learn from that. And obviously, where can, the district is trying to move forward in terms of that. You know, I do think, again, in the recommendations, it does discuss resource allocation. It discusses training in those items. And so I do think overall arching themes throughout those findings do relate to those items.
And one last thing. Do you think, in your opinion, that it would be helpful if the board had, had a better structured, had actually even had a finance committee to help assist with the citizen oversight of this process, of our financials and budget?
I know that this is what every person thinks the CPA's most common answer is, but I think it depends. It depends on each district and what they're looking for and what they, you know, their focus is. We do work with a variety of districts across that potentially don't have a finance committee, but we also work with ones that have a very intense finance committee. So I think collectively, working together to figure out what's best for the district and what makes the most sense is the answer as a defense.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Amy? Dawn? I'll give you a second to weigh in on your thoughts.
Since it's a hundred and sixty-page document and it clearly was confusing some people, I wanted to summarize the findings and recommendations and root cause. So there was inadequate segregation of duties, internal controls, processes and procedures that need to be updated or created, supervision, training, resources, time capacity, turnover in key personnel, grant reconciliation done throughout the year instead of just once or twice, documentation and evidence, reviews, which is related to supervision, creating a checklist. And that was only said for one thing, but you know, best practice is probably have it for many of the things that were listed here. And then searching the system that was mentioned earlier. So, you know, there was confusion with some of that. I just wanted to clarify. And I think, I'll be honest, of all the things that are about like seven or eight pages that are here tonight, the one thing that I'm really having a hard time with is how none of those include some of the disparaging things that have been said this evening at the expense of people who are working very hard or have worked very hard. Nowhere does it say that in your report. So thank you for being professional. I appreciate that very much. And this is something that we could go and break these down on things that have been decided to go there, but I just really wanted to call that out. And thank you for finding the solutions and opportunities because that's important. That was a good deal and I appreciate your clarity. I also want to point out millions of things here that where we have nearly nineteen thousand lines of expenses listed on our website for just one recording period. And so when I think about six findings out of nineteen thousand lines, in addition to all the other financial transactions and intricacies that happen with a district our size, I just think that is the main thing. And albeit, now that these have been found, the correct actions are going to be put in place so there'll never be issues, these issues again ideally, because we do have amazing competent people. And there is also, without a doubt, every single person on this board has said more than once about the integrity and professionalism of staff. And so I'm not doing well stumping the idea that somebody is going to disparage people this evening.
All right, Denise?
There is also. So I have a question about, so there were the findings, like lack of the control of the funds and so forth. And yet at the same time, it was approved as an unmodified opinion. Can you talk a little bit about how, how those two work together?
Sure. The mic system crashed. I'm allowed to talk this, totally fine. So ideally, so there's really two items. So the unmodified opinion is the opinion that Pam Moran's hired to state that the financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And then generally something, we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards. So that means that throughout the process, we worked with management as items were identified in terms of financial, like transactional, and if they would need to be corrected, they were. And we got the report to a place where essentially it is materially correct in accordance with those standards. When we speak to some of the findings that were identified or that were noted, those that relate to internal control items, and that has to do with more of the processes that exist throughout the district that maybe really, that caused some of the transactions to not move as they should. So I, we adjusted the books where we helped, or not we helped, we worked with management to get the books to a place where they were materially correct. And then we're left, we are at that point, you know, put our opinion, which is unmodified and clean, but under those auditing standards of how the finance process kind of works, we still require to report them and those internal control items there. So while we have those items that were identified, the report itself is in compliance with all of the appropriate standards with a clean, unmodified opinion, which is essentially what she hired us to do. Does that help?
So what would be like, what would, what would it mean if it were, if to not get that unmodified opinion? What would, does, does that ever happen? Like what would be the circumstances that wish that would happen?
I can honestly say in my twenty-four years, I've never given an un, like a not, or we call it a qualified or an adverse opinion. I, I don't think we would, we would get to that point just because that wouldn't, I don't think the C D E would accept a report that has an adverse of opinion as such as it relates to those items. I've never really been in that situation before.
Okay, so but so hypothetically, if that were to happen, it would mean that like these problems were identified, but nothing was done to fix them or things like?
It means that the financial statements would not be in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards or auditing standards.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Comes, comes to me then. I want to share some things that I read in the report. I spent a couple of hours reading the audit findings. And then I will arrive at that kind of a conclusion. And what I have here is fairly brief. It sounds like it might be kind of scary to spend a couple of hours reading this. Is he going to go through like pages of notes? No, everything is in about five paragraphs. So I want to quote something that I read, which was in the, or is in the opinions section, page twenty-five, paragraph two of your audit report. This is a report that you signed and I assume submitted to the district on the sixteenth of December of twenty twenty-four. "In our opinion, based on our audit and reports of other auditors, the accompanying financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the aggregate discreetly presented components, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information. Thomas School District R U J is June thirty of twenty twenty-four, and the respective changes in its financial position for the year then ended." I'm going to stress this because this is what stood out to me in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So as board treasurer for three years before becoming vice president of the board, I was a member of the audit advisory committee. I heard praise from Henkel and Company auditors who were your predecessors. I saw the awards year after year that the district received, certificates of excellence and financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, also from the Association of School Business Officials. Because of that previous experience, I was surprised at the report that you submitted at our study session. To my knowledge, Thomas School District was never asked by state or federal governments to correct errors. And if we were, the deficiencies must have been corrected because we never heard anything about it. Nancy, I want to thank you for something that you provided us. Thanks for sharing your blog about this topic with the rest of us. In your blog, I found this sentence. "It's important to note that when changing audit firms, the first-year audit will most likely find issues not found by the previous firm." And I appreciate that that was part of that blog. Now, in terms of conclusion, we know now that Pam Moran found some deficiencies while conducting the audit. The district immediately hired them to address the deficiencies, and they've already been addressed or are in process. I want to point out too, the district did nothing illegal. The district didn't know that the errors existed because the previous auditing firm didn't identify them, nor were they identified by state or federal source. didn't identify them, nor were they identified by state or federal sources. My impression from reading the report and hearing what was said at the study session is that the deficiencies identified are as a result of a variety of errors, which do not include lack of transparency, mismanagement, or anything illegal on the part of Thompson School District. So I wanted to share those thoughts with you after I had read the report and had a chance to think about my previous experience as the board treasurer, and just close by saying, we now know that there are deficiencies, and this company, which is highly regarded, has now been hired to fix them. So that's all that I have. So unless someone has a particular additional comment that you'd like to make, I think we're ready to proceed to a vote on the newly numbered item. It was seven point four when it was originally part of the discussion action item. It's now seven point five. Are there any additional comments or?
Yes, Vice President.
Yes, go ahead.
At the audit committee meeting last week, Director Lawson asked you to rank each of the findings to their severity, and you responded with, they're all nine point five. How would you help us understand what, how that, what that means in light of everything that you've heard us discuss? I mean, this is, in my opinion, as an accountant, this is serious, and to talk about it doesn't mean that you are disparaging any of the staff in the finance department. It means you're acknowledging there's an issue. And in talking with the finance department, which I know you did in great detail, many of the staff were aware, but were unable, they were unable to get the necessary support that they needed to effect change. I know you can't speak to them, but can you at least address your comment about they're all nine point five and severe?
Sure, so I think, like, when you take a step back and think about if there is an area in which there's a gap identified as it relates to internal controls, that opens up the district for risk, whether it be, and again, I would like to also add, my audit does not cover fraud, legal activities, or anything like that, but it opens up the opportunity to present that at a higher level. So as those, as that is identified, it it opens up that opportunity to have significant potential, serious items like those things to happen, which obviously, in in any setting, public or private, impacts operations and puts, you know, tax, in this case taxpayers' dollars out there at risk. So when I see those types of items identified, or we identify those types of items in order to address them and make sure that it is understood that it is a concern, and because in our, doing this a long time, everyone, and again, like, it's never, it's kind of like a cyber attack, you never think you're going to get attacked until you're attacked, and then you have to figure out how, how did this happen, what did we do, where was our holes, right? So potentially, hopefully, this is a way to put that out to the district as a way of holes that have been identified, now let's put some pieces together and work together to make sure that those holes are put, you know, in place and proper items are put in place so that the the risk gets, you know, mitigated and and appropriate so that it's it's, there's comfort at all levels, leadership or public escalates as it relates to, you know, for management on the, on the day to day and what that money is being used for. So I hope that helps, at least go through maybe why those, you know, I I said that in that fashion, just in a matter of, it's more about the risk that it's open, that's there, and and making sure that it's understood, that it's, the risk is there.
Thank you very much.
Comments or questions from any of the other board members? All right, then I think we are ready to vote on newly numbered item seven. Right, I'm going to ask for a motion after I read this. On newly numbered item seven point five, approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual comprehensive financial report, is there a motion?
So moved. All second.
All right, any subsequent discussion? All right, morally, would you call? Go ahead.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz. Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpel.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving now to the newly numbered seven point six, approval of the City of Loveland consent to lease. Todd, are you in charge of this one too?
Yeah.
This is the Todd show, yeah, absolutely. All right, so you have a presentation for us.
Memo here.
All right.
Yeah, this item was put on to action discussion tonight. The City of Loveland is going for C O Ps for their Fourth Street improvements. As part of that process, they're actually in the final parts of closing their C O Ps. And as part of a C O P, you have to put land up for collateral. And they put the land up for collateral, they saw that we were on, part of the title, on nineteen eighty-six. So back in nineteen eighty-six, we signed agreement with Loveland. We actually had a shared use agreement of the facility on First and Wilson, to where we shared maintenance shops. Since then, this lease, the original lease has been vacated. Both parties have finalized and vacated the lease as far as agreements between, payments have all been complete. What didn't get done when we vacated this agreement back in, I think it was early nineties, is no one actually went to the title company and said, okay, this agreement's done, we were never taken off the title. So what this does is basically release us from, you know, being the lease partner on that, meaning that actually is the city's property. So this is to really just a cleanup item for the city to say, can the board approve and take us off that title so they can then proceed with their C O Ps for the Fourth Street improvement?
Amy, we're starting to read this time for comments or questions. No? Dawn, anything? Denise? Alexandra?
What, what happened if we said no? Like, we, we don't have any claim to that building or anything like that, right?
By contract, we don't. We are, so if we said no, they would have to go apply for a lease, and they would attach the C O Ps. Unfortunately, to do that, they have to go through a phase of process, and then they will close on their C O Ps.
But if, but we don't stand to, like, gain anything either way, or lose, or lose anything either way, right?
No, no.
For us, it's just a
Correct. The original contract was already, it's been completed for decades now, and the payments back and forth have been done for decades.
Thirty-five minutes. So I think we're ready to proceed to a vote. This is the newly numbered seven point six, approval of the City of Loveland consent to lease. So I entertain a motion. All right, so that's Dawn and Alexandra. Is there any further discussion or any discussion in actuality? Let's proceed to the vote.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz. Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpel.
Aye.
All right, seven point six passes six to nothing. Before we move to discussion items, board colleagues, do you want a short break? If you feel the need for a short break, please. So can we think about a seven minute break? Sound okay? So we will come back at seven and sixteen. Item eight on the agenda. Discussion items, not discussion actions, just discussion items. Beginning with eight point one, summer school update. So you're on.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President. Members of the board and Dr. Schaefer, Melissa Schneider, Assistant Superintendent Learning Services. Tonight, as usual, at this time of year, we present to you proposal for our summer school programming this coming summer. So I am willing to, without further ado, turn it over to Tiffany Jones, who is our Director of Curriculum and Instructional Design.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President. Members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Tiffany Jones, Director of Curriculum and Training. So tonight, we have for you a short presentation and some updates on our summer scholars program. So in front of you, you have your connection to Stride 2025. And we wanted to make sure that you remember what we discussed in the fall. So below our items that we had a recap, I believe it was October, that I came and presented to update you on our 23-24 experience. So just to refresh everybody's memory, summer scholars, we really wanted to make sure that we had a solid focus on our academics and making sure that we have an opportunity for students K through eight in the summer. We wanted to make sure that staff utilized our district curriculum and made sure that there was alignment with everyday academic language. And we have a theme each week for students to engage in. And then each site had access for breakfast and lunch. That was definitely important for us. And that we wanted to make sure that every student in Thompson School District had access to our summer program. So we also went over and up over what we've learned. And so we really wanted to make sure that as we continue forward with summer scholars, that we're providing those day-to-day lesson plans. We want to make sure that's tight across our districts and making sure that we're really sticking true to those standards and not leaving it in the hands of our teachers, who might not always have those literacy interventions and math interventions, because of course, we open it up to all district staff and outside to teach summer school. We also wanted to make sure that our theme and our enrichment opportunities, we're going to book those on our end, so they're consistent across each of our sites, to make sure that nobody gets left out of seeing the bear catch or the fire engine or the ambulance. We want to make sure that students have their workbooks. If a Chromebook does not go home, because remember, in elementary school, it was a choice for parents to allow that Chromebook to go home. We are going to provide that for them, just so there's no barrier again when they come into summer scholars. We'll also partner with ITS and Transportation and ESS. We want to make sure that we have access to a full-time sub. We know that just because it's summer, it doesn't mean teachers aren't taking some time off, but we just want to have a rotating sub. And then we knew we needed to do something different with middle, which you wrote in here about in a moment. And we also had a great floating counselor last year, and that was really key to make sure that that counselor was there to provide support at any given moment. So here's what we've done since our last meeting. We did listening sessions with middle schoolers, asking them why they were not as excited as I am about summer academic opportunities. And so we listened, we asked a ton of questions. They gave us a lot of suggestions. A lot of it was bribery or gift cards or pizza. And then we also met with Leah Howard to determine our summer school options for sites, because of course, we know during the summer, there's a lot of construction happening on our buildings. We went through ideas of, hey, with middle schoolers, would this work or would that work? What do you think? And then we reviewed all of our I-ready data for summer scholar students. So one of the asks, I believe, was how do we track these students to make sure we're getting a greater return on our investment? And what we've done is through EduClimber and Infinite Campus, we've actually identified anybody who's been in summer scholars, so we can track and monitor their progress over the course of the year. We also reached out to all of our teachers who had a summer scholar student in their class and asked survey questions around, do you feel like that student was more prepared? Did they come in with a smaller gap and less, maybe things that they don't remember in the fall? And then, of course, we developed a job description for the summer scholars curriculum writer, to make sure that, of course, that is being done now. So again, when teachers start, they're coming in with a full curriculum design for the summer. We've also met with our ITS, so that we can be ready to go for online registration, and that is already in the works, ready to go. So some updates. Well, we're planning for K through three, which is a change. We have looked at four elementary sites. Birthed Out, we want to make sure, of course, do that. We do have a birth in site available for our families. That was one of our largest sites last year, and that really, we want to make sure continues to happen. BFK, Maureen Edmondson, and then PVA. The other thing we're adding this year is a strand of DLI. We know that they're, through our PAC committee for our families, our parent advisory committee, this is coming up as a need, and so we're certainly going to offer it this year. We're going to do a three-week program from June ninth through the twenty-sixth. We'll continue to hold elementary hours from eight to noon, and of course, serve breakfast and lunch at all our sites. The one thing that you might find here that is different compared to last year, we're really going to reach out to those read plan identified students and have a targeted focus on those who have a read plan or who have received a spring bridge letter, which means those students who may have not done well on one assessment, but their other assessment was pretty strong. And so it's those kids we're just kind of keeping an eye on, especially in kindergarten and first, they receive a spring bridge letter. So that's what that means. Those families, we already have all of their emails. We will reach out to them on February first, inviting them through parent email, along with all of the information on how to register. So we're going to target those replanned, spring bridge, excuse me, students, so we can get them to sign up first. Then what we will do is, we know that conferences are coming up, and so we will make sure that between February first and March thirteenth, that those families are getting consistent communication from us on how to register, so we hopefully can get those students registered first. Then, we will also make sure that if those students have not signed up, we already have that list, that they will receive a letter to go, the schools will receive that letter to go home at parent teacher conferences with that information. So we're trying to hit them at every possible access point that we possibly can to make sure and encourage that they are attending. We also know that parents through Infinite Campus will acknowledge their commitment to summer scholars when they register. And that commitment really just says, we acknowledge that you're holding a seat for us. We really are going to make sure that the three weeks we're there and that parents understand the importance of coming the entire three weeks. We're going to make sure that registration is based on open seats. And then once those seats are closed, we've got a maximum of twenty seats per teacher, two at each grade level, so two kinders, two firsts, two second, two thirds at each of our sites. But once those seats are at capacity, that classroom will be closed. But then any open seats will be open to all of our district families, and that will happen on March seventeenth. A waitlist will begin if needed, and of course, if any seats, if somebody decides to decline at last minute, we will call those families right away and get them right in. And then what we'd really like to do is hire site leaders in February, so we can start planning and making sure that our site leaders are ready to go. So you might be wondering what's happening with fourth through eighth grade. So what we are going to do is, we are doing an intermediate secondary site, and we are going to host it at TCC as long as facilities approves that one. We're going to make sure that with the construction and the new addition with our pathway, that we're safe. But what we've been told right now is that we're good to go for TCC. Level and high is our backup plan, but they're also having roof work. But our role is TCC, and so it's like a ninety-five percent chance. That's how it's going to make happen. We're going to follow the same timeline, with June ninth through twenty-sixth. The hours are going to be staggered, eight-thirty to twelve-thirty, but of course, have breakfast and lunch. Part of the reason we stagger those hours is for transportation to make sure, because we want to make sure that the elementary students are dropped off first, same bus drivers that are doing the exact same routes for our secondary students and our intermediate students. What we are going to do is, we're partnering with Mike Menzhardt, which I know most of you know. We are going to really target, for the fifth graders, are going to have seven to ten options. They're also going to connect directly with careers in our pathways and our TCC pathways. So we're going to expose them at a younger age on how to get really excited about their upcoming futures. And then what we will do for middle school is, we've got some pared-down courses, four to six, because they're going to go deeper. It's not just kind of an intro. They're going to really get into those hands-on, deeper-level courses. And then parents, of course, will register through parent portal, just like they are the elementary students. So of course, there will be a literacy and math component in each of those courses. We're also going to follow that design cycle. We want to make sure that some examples for you for fourth and fifth, so you're seeing our brainstorm is culinary, because that's one of our pathways. We know that candy-making might be really exciting for students. We know that coding and robotics. We also know that we have an interest in making sure that our students are exposed to instruments in fourth and fifth grade. And so I know I already had an email from one of our very excited music teachers to do an intro to instruments and musical careers for the kids, so that when they're getting into middle school, they're already exposed to all of the interests or instruments that they're interested in, and hopefully to grow that program even further with music. We know that for sixth and eighth grade, we're looking at graphic arts with animation business. They're going to do a shark tank pitch construction. We know we've got construction management. We know we've also got geometry and construction. They're going to do a birdhouse. And then we also know to follow our health pathway, we're going to do some intro to CPR, because a lot of our students are starting to get into babysitting, et cetera. And we really want to introduce them to CPR and healthcare. So we also know that that is really tying our kids into those pathways, but we're trying to get some early exposure to all of our district pathways along with those TCC courses. So our next steps is, we will hire our site leads. We're going to hire our teachers and then determine which courses will be at TCC, because again, we want to see what that interest level is. And some of that interest might be by the staff we're hiring. And so we want to be very strategic around who we're hiring and what pathway option they're going to bring. We'll also work with Transportation on locations for pickup and drop-off to make sure that communication is real clear for our families. What questions do you have?
All right. Let's see, let's look at the rotation. Dawn, would you like to lead on? Denise?
I just love the connection to TCC and the pathways. Yeah, just a couple, no questions.
Alexandra?
So I'm curious, you mentioned at the beginning about how you've been looking at the I-ready data and the teacher question about if there's any differences. Can you give us a sense of what you're finding?
Yeah, overwhelmingly, the teachers that responded to the survey said kids definitely were coming in with more academic vocabulary and kind of that sense that they haven't forgotten those routines in school. The other piece with I-ready data, we knew we missed our target with the students that needed to be there. Typically, when we pulled our data that I shared with Dr. Schneider and Dr. Schaefer, a lot of our students were actually already on grade level. And so that's why we're really focusing on those K through three read plans. We also know that is a really important group, that we need to make sure that they're at grade level by the end of third grade. And so when we started really diving into the data, I believe it was ninety percent of those students were already at grade level.
So. No, that's, no, that's good. I mean, that's, that's good to hear. And it's good to hear that you looked at that and are, are making the changes to, you know, target the kids who need it more than, more than the ones who maybe have been going there already. So cool, thank you.
Nancy?
I love this program. And I, I think it's great that we were able to find the other two hundred thousand, because I looked it up, and it looks like we were basically like a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So now you have a lot more room to really make it a robust program. And to follow what Director Lesson asked is, so what you're saying is that the summer program, for those who are already at grade level, you realize that you need to like up it so they're a little, getting a little more challenged, and then also identify that you need to focus more down here on the K through three reading?
We knew we needed to do something different for K through three. For fourth through eight, we needed to engage them in a different way. If they're going to come to academic, you know, summer school, we really want to make sure that we're engaging and enriching. And we knew we had a huge priority to get those K through three back to grade level. So that was, that's our primary focus. And then about that enrichment opportunity, the other piece that we hear from our students, especially in middle school, they don't always know those pathways, which is why we really wanted to make sure there's a strong connection where kids are starting to be introduced at a younger age to what we really can offer.
So on the music pathway, what you're offering through the summer, is this the same as or different or in addition to the music?
In addition to.
In addition to the music. Okay, I think that's really awesome. I always loved going to music camp. I just think it was fun. I couldn't play cello right now to save my life, but I did have fun when I was in school. So thank you, it's great, it's great.
Amy?
Alexandra, actually. I asked a question, but great, I mean. Thank you.
All right. One question and then some comments. Have you established a maximum number of students that you could handle?
Six hundred and eighty.
Six hundred and eighty. How many did you have last year?
We had about six hundred and eighty.
Oh, okay.
We just want to make sure we keep those ratios low. We want to make sure that we're truly providing what they need over the summer. And if we're going to do those enrichment opportunities, clearly, if kids are working with buns and burners and grills and, you know, those things that I get very nervous about sometimes, we want to make sure that we're supporting that as well. So we also want it to be very, you know, a great experience for kids, whereas it's a one to twenty ratio.
Yep. And four quick comments. Of all the things that I like about this program, I think there's nothing I like more than the name of it. Calling this program a summer school program, summer scholars rather than summer school, or some of the other options that undoubtedly you had thought of. I think that's brilliant. I congratulate you on the fidelity of the program and on the analysis that you and your team did of last year's program. Identified where you needed to beef things up, maybe what you needed to drop, what you needed to change. I spent most of the last day of summer scholars at Turner Middle School last year. And the kids who were there, as a retired teacher, I'm used to being around kids on the last day of school. And a lot of times, it's like, let me out of here. I did not get that feeling. They were engaged up until, up until the last. And that's, that's a tribute to your leadership. That's a tribute to the teachers who invested so much, the parents who felt that it was important, and of course, the kids. So I guess I'll just close by saying, keep up the good work. This is such an important program that Thompson School District offers. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to jump in? There's a comment from back there, somebody wants. Do you want to come up to the microphone so we can all hear you?
I was just curious if there is anything similar to this at above eighth grade levels?
You want the high school, huh?
Yeah.
So we do our transition program from eighth to ninth grade, but they do credit recovery focusing in the high school. Theo, I don't know of any other high school specific, though, kind of academic focus, do you?
So it's exactly what you said, and maybe.
I just want to be sure.
So it totally is at the high school level, they do their own individual credit recovery systems, and then we do the eighth and ninth grade freshman transition program over the summers. And she said earlier, we're going to do a similar thing for the eighth and ninth grade transition.
I was just wondering, are there anything about like stereotypes and conception that kids might already have about summer school?
That's part of why we changed the name, to be summer scholars. And it has that kind of camp adventure piece. And then we added an enrichment every single day for them. That way, it's not just, you know, I'm here because I'm not doing well. It's really, we're here to make sure you're successful.
So good questions.
This seems like an amazing program.
Thank you.
And a closing comment for you. Thank you for sticking with us, student Emily. I'm sorry, I didn't remember your, your first name until the bitter end. That's quite a commitment. And we, as adults up here, we acknowledge, we know that you're here and it speaks volumes about who you are and what's important to you. And thanks for coming up and asking Tiffany the questions that you did. And also for the others who have stuck with us through this long board meeting that dealt with a lot of their topics. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're ready for item eight point two, which is a nutrition services update. And you want to introduce your team, Todd?
Yes, Vice President Boyd. Members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Dr. Schaefer, Dr. Pendle. Yes, we have another exciting presentation tonight. We are inviting our nutrition service department up to give an update on what they do. So it's been a little while since they've provided an update. And I'll invite you to walk through the presentation and just share the services that they provide our students.
Good evening, Vice President Boyd. Members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Dr. Schaefer, Director of Nutrition Services. I also have Chef Sarah, who is our, she has a very long title, Culinary Farm School and Sustainability Specialist. We are happy to be here. I was happy here a few hours ago, but I'm still happy to be here. So thank you for having me here. I'm usually good. So just a little bit of general information. So we are operating under the Healthy School Meals for All program, which means that all students have access to breakfast and lunch, regardless of puzzled income or other eligibility. So that is a whole program that we've been operating under. Right now, we're doing about twelve thousand meals a day, so that just keeps increasing since COVID, really. We see increases month over month and year over year. All of our meals, I think probably everybody knows this, but we have to meet very strict USDA nutrition guidelines on things like sodium and fat. There are some new things coming down with added sugar and some other items too, so. And then our department is primarily funded through USDA reimbursement, reimbursements, sorry. So Healthy School Meals for All program, we are in year two of that program. As you know, that was something that was on the ballot in twenty-two. And so unfortunately, there has been a funding shortfall. I guess the good thing was, there was a lot more participation in all of the school districts than they anticipated, but it did create a funding shortfall. This year, it was planned for some additional funding for wage increases or stipends for kitchen staff specifically, and then some additional money for local food purchases, which is something that is near and dear to our hearts. Having that access to everybody is, is amazing. It does come with some challenges, which we anticipated some, but now that we are living it, some schools have literally, you know, doubled or almost tripled their participation. And they just, you know, the actual square footage of the kitchen, it was just not really designed for that. They may or may not have, you know, the proper equipment or enough equipment. It's taking a toll on some of our. They may or may not have, you know, the proper equipment or enough equipment. It's taking, um, a toll on some of our equipment too. Um, so it has, um, definitely, definitely, we've seen some challenges. Uh, our, our labor situation, we have struggled with staffing and labor for, um, gosh, as long as I can remember, it feels like. And so, um, you know, having, having that additional volume is, is more challenging with that increased volume. And then time to eat, uh, not only time to, you know, prepare food and all of that, but just time to eat too. Getting, you know, six hundred kids through the line and, and, um, having that time to still, you know, eat their, eat their meal. Especially now with the salad bars and those kinds of things too. You know, it takes a little longer sometimes to make choices. And also to just consume those items, you know, it takes a little bit longer than showing the PDJ in your mouth, so. Um, so yeah, the, the future of that program, the funding for that is a little unclear. Uh, I know there's been lots of advocacy, uh, on the part of school districts in Colorado, and the legislature has, um, really, you know, taken a lot into consideration as to how they can continue to fund the program. Um, I, I really don't see some of those extra things happening, but, but just, you know, the meal program itself, um, they're looking at, you know, how, how that can be sustainable. Um, so we are waiting to see and, you know, looking for the masks, so. I'm losing my dress already. So some staffing updates. We are, knock on wood, have minimal vacant positions right now. We have four, four open positions, which is kind of unheard of for us. Absenteeism does present pretty frequent challenges for us. Uh, obviously, when people are sick, uh, they can't deal with food, so that's kind of an added thing in food service. There are some regulations about being out, you know, at least thirty hours and all that. But sometimes we have as much as, you know, twenty-five percent of our staff that is out, and so it's hard, hard to fill those positions sometimes. And often, uh, the office staff is out in kitchens helping to serve. So, um, one thing that we've been able to do this year is to increase our sun pool, which has helped a lot. And the, you know, there are some days where, where it's still pretty challenging, but our staff does amazing, amazing things, um, in kitchens sometimes to just make it happen no matter what. And so, uh, sometimes I think that's to our detriment, but, uh, they, they make it happen. They know it's important. Those kids are coming, and so they want to make sure that they get fed, so. Um, we did add a dryer this year. Um, we are doing internal milk delivery. The, in the past, when we had milk delivered to each individual school, um, it costs a lot more money to do that. But also, um, there are some security issues because they, or potential security issues, I will say, because they were coming, you know, at four AM when nobody else is in the building. And, um, it, there were just some concerns about that. And so we made a decision to do that internally a couple of years ago. And right now that's working out really, really well for us. So, um, also with the increase in the volume of meals, we've had to add some hours to the dryer positions as well. Some of the schools that are, have a very small kitchen or very little space are having to get multiple deliveries a week, um, because they simply cannot hold the food. So, um, that has been, been a big help too. So as I've said, uh, Chef Sarah here is our Culinary and Farm School and Sustainability Specialist. She was hired last year and has done some really amazing things, which I will let her speak to in a second. And then we also created a position, um, for special diets, allergens, meal modifications. That is something that we have just seen, uh, really increase, not only due to, you know, added participation, but just, um, I think, some of it I think is based on trends and different things, but also, um, there's just, there's just a lot of allergens and a lot of, you know, modifications to manage. And we needed somebody that could really be dedicated to that, instead of it being, you know, an added responsibility on somebody else's plate. So, um, that is, that's, she's been in place just a couple, couple months. So, um, we're still, uh, working through some things with that, but we're really excited to have that position so that we can, you know, be very protective of the students that have, especially the anaphylactic allergies and all of that. Um, another thing that we have reinstated recently is, um, the perfect attendance for our department. That was something that we were doing back when I started, and then during COVID, um, we eliminated that. Because when you had to quarantine or whatever, it wasn't really fair to, you know, hold people to perfect attendance. So, uh, we reinstated that last year, and we do it by semester, um, to give people a, a little easier time to accomplish that. Because I think that's something that's really hard to accomplish, especially a lot of our, um, kitchen staff are moms with students in those schools. And dads too, we're getting more and more, which is great. But, uh, we just had, uh, twenty recipients for, um, per semester. So we'll do that again second semester, and then we will have some people that will make it all year long, and they get additional stipend for that too, so. So a couple of highlights and things that we've been working on and continue to work on, um, were changes for us too. So, uh, we did have to go out to bid for new software. And we ended up going with a different company, um, than we have had for many, many years. And it has been, you know, challenging, of course, to learn new software and treating everybody and all of that. And we still come across some, some things, uh, with the new software, but it was much, much, uh, needed, and we're, we're pretty happy with it, so. And then we have a new website too, like, you know, the whole district underwets and shaking artists, uh, the website and stuff. So, um, that has had a couple of challenges too, but it's got some really neat features that we are pretty happy about. We also, the, the buying co-op that we belong to, um, they've been out to bid for a new distributor. So as part of that co-op, um, we also have a new distributor. So that has been an adjustment as well, but I think, uh, they, they've done a pretty good job for us so far, so we've been pretty happy with it. Some of the supply chain issues and that, uh, you know, everybody has those, so it, it's not something that is, you know, a problem for this particular distributor group. The Health Department is, uh, has a new requirement for a higher level food safety certification. Certainly, we train all our staff on food safety, um, and I know it was mentioned, uh, earlier tonight, uh, about students being certified. So, uh, our kitchen staff now has to be certified at the manager level, not the food handler level. So we are in the process, um, we are proctoring those exams internally. We just did the first one at the PD day in January, so. And we had a really good passing rate for that, so I was pretty happy about it. Our next one will be in February, our next exam, so it'll just be an ongoing, you know, thing for us to, to do, but really important. We did buy a new refrigerated truck, which works out good a lot since we are, uh, it's a worthy role. Right now, every truck is a refrigerated truck in this weather, but, um, it, it's nice to have one that really is truly a refrigerated truck. And, uh, we have been fortunate to get some new equipment through the last month too, so we've been able to replace some aging equipment, or the equipment that has really, you know, taken a toll with the increases, or expand, uh, some capacity at some schools too, so that has been awesome. Um, we have increased local purchases. Again, that's something that's very near and dear to our heart, and, um, one of the reasons that I hired the fabulous Sarah. Um, and again, she'll speak to that in just a second a little bit more, but, um, we do receive some grant funding for local purchases, uh, through some other entities, and that is really helpful. But it is something that, you know, we're committed to do, uh, regardless of whether we get additional funding for it, so. Uh, we've also been able to increase, um, some scratch items and quick scratch items. Uh, that's something, if you remember, the last time we presented, uh, you know, during COVID, all of that was paused, and so now we are back on track of, um, some of that stuff. And we have also been able to reduce packaging. Uh, there was, um, I don't remember when, but styrofoam had to go away. I can't remember. It was last January, I think. So it was the opportune time for us to do, uh, more service on the line and really eliminate as much packaging, uh, as we can. We're using, uh, washable reusable trays, um, in some schools, uh, where they're able to wash the trays, um, during service or, or immediately after service. So it doesn't work well in some situations, but we're doing it, you know, as much as we possibly can. Um, and then we are about to launch some vending machines here. We're piloting at a couple of schools, where students will be able to put their number in and get a meal out of the machine. So they're refrigerated machines, so obviously we're just going to have cold, you know, salads, cold sandwiches, so maybe protein packs or smoothies or things. Um, and it'll have a little bit of allopard too, um, but I'm hoping that it will, um, alleviate some of the weight. Uh, we're doing it at Thompson Valley High School in Mountain View, and hopefully, um, in the next few weeks, we will have those open running. So we're pretty excited about that, and we'll see. We haven't done that before, so it's a, it's a great new thing for us, so. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, which is a good time because I have like zero.
Okay. Good evening. Thanks for having us. Um, so kind of my, my part in Nutrition Services is, um, you know, Culinary and Farm School. So, um, through, before Healthy School Meals for All, uh, we went and lobbied at the Capitol and, um, created the local food program. And so the local food program is where we get that grant funding for local purchases. And, um, that was supposed to become part of Healthy School Meals for All, like that reimbursement, uh, this year, but of course, that didn't happen. However, the state was still able to find funds to, um, continue with local food, uh, program funding, and so we were given a grant, um, again, this year, and, um, we just really went for it. So, um, this year we have increased, um, the farmers and, um, and distributors that we purchase from. Um, so we have a really fabulous relationship with Hoffman Family Farm, um, and, um, we've also been using Rogers Mesa fruit, uh, for a number of years now. Um, in addition, this year we are purchasing all of our tortillas globally from Colorado Tortilla Company. And Ready Foods is a manufacturer in Denver, and they produce, um, our green chili, and we have a delicious, um, breakfast sausage gravy that we purchased from them. Um, East Denver Food Hub, um, has been a real game changer for us. So they are, um, they bring in food from farms on ranches all over Colorado and distribute to schools and restaurants, and so we've made a really nice relationship with them. Um, and, uh, this is something I'm very, very excited about, is that we've done a lot of, um, local beef purchases this year. So, um, we have been feeding our kids, you know, local ground beef in their tacos and zombie joes, things like that. So, um, and we did ground beef patties, um, for Colorado Pudding. So, um, we also are, uh, using grilled crust dairy for our milk, and, um, that's, that's been like a really cool thing too. So it's my goal to continue to grow our local food purchases, and I think that we're doing a really good job. Um, we're trying to incorporate some of those locally grown foods into our menu, um, such as like potatoes. We can get potatoes all year long. And so we have like a loaded baked potato on the menu now, um, you know, things like that. So, uh, just trying to continue with that. Um, and that is pretty much it. Okay.
Any questions for us today?
All right. Um, let's see. Denise, start with you. Comments or questions?
Uh, I don't think so. I had one earlier and it just stopped.
I'll tell you what, if it occurs to you, you can ask at the end. Okay. Alexandra, comments or questions?
So a comment I have is that I think there's been a lot of sort of new and different food choices, um, that I think it's a really liking for the most part. Um, and I think, I mean, I've heard, you know, that definitely there's some popular, popular things that are different, um, this year, so that's great. Um, and the local food is great. The question I have is, I know that there's a lot of foods, I guess, thrown away. Um, and that by, you know, by law, you're not allowed to keep it or give it to other, donate it to other things or stuff like that. Is there, with like your sustainability work, is there, um, work or things that are being done to try to reduce the amount of food that is wasted?
So there's a couple of things on that. The, when we first started with Healthy School Meals, we weren't really sure what the participation was going to be. And when we have lots of choices, that is helpful, but students want what they want. And we, we get phone calls sometimes for parents, um, that, you know, their, their student tells them that we ran out of food. Well, we didn't run out of food, but maybe we ran out of, you know, whatever entree they wanted. So, you know, the hopes of having lots of choices is, is to be able to combat that. But it is really, really hard for us because people don't pre-order in most cases. There are a few schools where they will do that, they will send down a count, but we, we don't attach a meal to a student. So we don't know when students change their mind. So it's, it's certainly not an exact science. I hate that we throw food away. We have tried to, uh, I, I've had a few conversations, um, with some local entities about, um, food recovery or food rescue. And it's really hard for them too, to find somebody that, they told me basically they'd have to have someone on the call. We never know what we're going to have, you know, it, it changes from school to school, from day to day, as far as what is left over. Certainly, there would be some quality concerns and some food safety concerns, um, around that. But it is something that we hate, um, as, as part of the program, and we are constantly trying to figure out a better way to, um, reduce the waste.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think kind of a little, another piece of that is just like, um, you know, going in and, and being there, you know, while the kids are kind of like, are selecting their food and saying, oh, my gosh, that's a lot of peas. Are you sure you're going to eat all those peas? You know, just things like that, to get them kind of thinking like, yeah, you know what, I can't, I can't eat, you know, two piles of applesauce or whatever, that excited. So, and, and then they, you know, just to kind of get them thinking about like, oh, I really don't want you to throw that in the garbage. Um, and then aside from that, um, there's also been a little bit of discussion about, um, trying to maybe purchase some big digesters, um, that are like just big small posters. They're very, very expensive. Um, that's, that's, um, it would have to be grant funded, um, and so that's, that has just been kind of a, a little discussion, but I think that that is something I'm working towards.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Okay. So I, I think it's a great update. I don't envy your challenge of trying to figure out all the different, um, food allergies. Just with our daughters, when we're trying to do holiday, we have yeast and gluten, so they, it's difficult to figure out how to make a biscuit along the wall or anything. But, um, my question is on the, one of them is on the meal vending machines. They use their student ID. Are they charged for, or they just, it just allows them to get it? How does that work with the Healthy Meals for All?
So just like they would at any other school, we have little pin pads where students come in and put their number in, and it accesses their meal account. And they receive their meal for free. Everybody receives.
Oh, and they just use that for the reimbursement?
Uh-huh. So it would be the same thing. They just punch in their number into the vending machine instead of the little pin pad at, at the normal serving line. And they will be able to access their account and get the meal for free. Allopard items are not free. They're never free.
And then I was curious, so I know we go to Casby every year, and you go through the vendor hall. There's always, it seems like it grows every year, the number of those suppliers who will come in and, you know, cook and provide and deliver and all that kind of stuff. Is that ever, is any of that ever a viable option to, to use? Like, when you have some of these schools with small space or? I still have a lot of the brochures that I picked up this last time. I could drop them off sometime, but.
Like a pre-made meal, or?
No, they actually cook it fresh. It's just they, they bring it in. They're the ones. They're the ones doing all the ordering and cooking.
Outsourcing?
Yeah. Is that ever a viable option or no? No? Of course, you're like, no!
I would put a set of our jobs!
But I just think when you talk about the schools that have really small spaces.
What we'd really like is a central kitchen. So, for the next one, so that we can centralize production and, you know, free up that space so that they're just finishing it at the school. So, that would be a dream to be able to do that.
What we do right now is we satellite meals out of six of our larger schools to our smaller schools. So, the schools that can't hold all of that food, they get a card each day with their food that will be used even the next day. So, that's kind of our method right now. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for the update.
Just wow. I mean, you guys do so much. I mean, and yeah, how, how do you know how many students are going to be eating that day? I mean, it's just, it's always a mind to me. But I, one year, when we were able to do our, you know, when we had different, when we were able to go work with, I had a day down at Turner Middle School in food service. It was wonderful. I mean, what you guys do is just phenomenal. So, just so much gratitude and gratefulness for your department. And yeah, just, thank you. And wow. We have an amazing group of people.
Sure.
I just, I love hearing from students about the improvements, like just organically. It's been really fun to get these updates that are like, lunch was so good today. You know, I mean, like, as a teenager who can leave campus and often does, it's really fun when she's like, oh, I really liked it. And I just love that that's happening more and more often, you know, because they're tough consumers, as you know. And I really appreciate that very, very much. And I know that a lot of that came from just being willing to listen and like be open and carry the feedback and knowing that, like, at the very beginning, that was very overwhelming. And, you know, like, you guys are asking for things that are just like, how do we make this happen? And yet somehow you are making these just constant progress and doing that work. And I really appreciate that because I know that you are also meeting all the other requirements that once the adults have. And then you're making food that kids like. And that's never easy, as any parent knows who's tried to feed their kids. So, thank you for doing all that and everything else that goes into it. It's really, it's really awesome, and I appreciate it a lot. And I think that like vending machine idea is super fun. Like, I appreciate the inventiveness of that and how you could be putting in things that are honestly already part of the mix, but just makes it like so much fun that they can get it themselves. Like, that independence is really great. So, thank you for all you've done to make this work and keep making it work and doing all the good stuff.
Just couple things quickly from me. Congratulations and thank you for continually innovate, to look for new ways, perhaps new foods, things that you do to increase interest and educate kids about nutrition and things like that. I certainly hope that the state can continue to fund this at some level. How many total employees do you have?
Depends on the day. It's about 100 in the department, including warehouse and delivery.
And you mentioned you wish that you had a central cooking kitchen. How many cooking kitchens do you have? Does each school have a cooking kitchen?
Sort of. I mean, some of them certainly are more well-equipped than others. There are some that have what we call rethirms, not a reable oven, although the manufacturer would tell you something different. But, you know, the infrastructure wasn't there because you have to have hoods and all of that. So, rethirms are, you don't have to have a hood for that. So, we were able to put, there were eight or 10 schools that had no cooking ability previously. When I first started, we were, we were shipping hot food, which, you know, the quality suffers and it leaves you up for potential food safety issues when you're doing that. And so, we were able to get some of the, was capital project money and then some grants to get at least rethirms in those schools. So, now we do have at least some level of cooking ability at every single school.
Okay. Just one last question. What time of the morning do you two have to be at work tomorrow?
In a couple of hours.
So, I think we're finished asking questions. Thank you. Thank you again for your fine presentation and for the very important role you play in our kids' education. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
We can tell. All right. Item number nine is written reports. We have a family's P.I.E. report that's available. Do we have any requests for information this evening? We're adjourned.